Good evening. Welcome to the November 5th meeting of the Oceanside City Council. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask our city clerk to go ahead and call roll, please.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Joyce.
Present.
Councilmember Figueroa.
Present.
Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you. Please rise for the invocation. Tonight, we have Father Charles Wright of the Prince of Peace Abbey. Father Charles, thank you so much for joining us and for giving us our invocation.
Let us pray. Divine Creator of all that we have, we turn to you for strength, wisdom, and prudence in these troubled and changing times. We are grateful for your bounty that you shower on us. We acknowledge our limit in dealing with the vast and uncertain options before us, especially in attending to the many resources of Oceanside and its steady expansion. We know that the true test of a government is its concern for all, but especially those who are most vulnerable. Only through your guidance can solutions be found with reason, and especially with the love that is so necessary for the cooperation of all in this worthwhile endeavor. Oceanside is making its way to a noteworthy city, and we ask for your protection and continued support of noteworthy stewards chosen to keep it so. And finally, we hold up to you those who dedicate their lives to protecting it, the police, the paramedics, the military, but especially the loyal and faithful council member, graced with the privilege of service to all its citizens without exception. So with the deepest gratitude, we seek all of these in your divine name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father Charles. Please remain standing and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Figueroa, could you please lead?
I do. True flag of the United States of America and to the public which expands, one nation under God, indigenous with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Please be seated. I'd like to go ahead and read the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the Payong Kowichum, people of the West, as the traditional land caretakers of the land on which Oceanside is built and its surrounding traditional cultural landscapes. Today, the Payong Kowichum are known as Luiseño and are made up of seven bands: La Jolla, Palapauma, Pechanga, Rincon, San Luis Rey, and Suboba. We are mindful of the indigenous peoples in this place, and we pay our respects to the Luiseño, past, present, and emerging. We are grateful to have the opportunity to be part of this community in Luiseño territory and to honor their history, culture, and perseverance of spirit. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a really fun kind of a thing, fun and sometimes informative and always something that we get inspired by. And the first one, this is the Proclamations and Presentations. And the first proclamation is in honor of the 250th anniversary of the U.S. Marine Corps, November 10th, 2025. And we are joined by retired Colonel Dan Whitley, Community Planning Liaison Officer for a Marine Corps Base Camp Pendleton. And it says, whereas November is designated as, excuse me, sorry about that. I thought I put them in order. Whereas on November 10th, 1775, the Second Continental Congress established two battalions of Continental Marines in Philadelphia's Ton Tavern, creating a force of, quote, "soldiers of the sea" to defend the cause of freedom. And whereas for 250 years, the United States Marine Corps has answered our nation's call, serving honorably in every conflict, in every climate and place, to defend the security and liberty of the American people. And whereas Marines have demonstrated unparalleled courage and ferocity on battlefields from the shores of Tripoli to Bello, Wood, Iwo Jima, Chosens Reservoir, Vietnam, and into the modern conflicts in Iraq and Afghanistan. And whereas throughout its history, the Corps has been bound by its core values of honor, courage, and commitment, and the unwavering spirit of Semper Fi, always faithful to their country, their mission, and to one another. And whereas Camp Pendleton, the largest U.S. Marine Corps installation on the West Coast, was established in 1942 to train U.S. Marines for service in World War II. Camp Pendleton has contributed greatly to the diversity and economy of the city of Oceanside. It has over 42,000 active-duty personnel, 73% living off-base, a daytime population of 70,000 military and civilian personnel, and more than 77,000 retired residing in the San Diego region, many who make Oceanside their home. And whereas this milestone anniversary offers a moment to reflect upon and honor the profound legacy of service and sacrifice of all Marines, past, present, and future. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim November 10th, 2025, as the 250th anniversary of the United States Marine Corps here in the city of Oceanside. We call upon all citizens to join in a tribute of gratitude for the distinguished service of the men and women of the Marine Corps. Thank you for your service, retired Colonel, and I'm going to hand you the mic because I'm sure you have a few words for us.
Yeah, that's right. We were founded in a bar. You heard that right. So Mayor Sanchez, I appreciate you having us out here and recognizing us on behalf of reading a general round, such as made you cook. They offer their condolences for not being here. As many of you know, the federal government is in a little bit of a state of disarray right now, so community engagements is kind of prohibited right now. But I am here, accepting this on behalf of the Command and the 40,000 or so Marines stationed right here at Camp Pendleton. And as many of you know me over the years, both in uniform and out, you know, I treat it as one community. You know, we come from the community, our families work in the community, our children go to school in the community, and a lot of us, when we leave active service, we go to continue to serve in the community. So we couldn't do it without you. We're blessed to have this relationship that we have with Oceanside, whether it's the government, the people, the organizations across the city. No better place to serve as a United States Marine. So Mayor Sanchez, on behalf of all the Marines, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a photo. If the rest of the council would like to join? Thank you. Thank you for your service. All right, next we do have, okay, I still have jet lag, okay? Next, we do have a proclamation in honor of National Veterans and Military Families Month 2025. And this, and I'd like to call Lori Booty to come on over and help me make this happen. So this month, National Veterans and Military Families Month 2025 is in November. And whereas November is designated as National Veterans and Military Families Month to honor the service and sacrifice of all who have served the United States Armed Forces and the families who have supported them. And whereas being a veteran or service member requires enduring challenges, most Americans will never know. And being a member of a military family requires sacrifices that often include separation, frequent moves, and the constant worry of a loved one's safety. And whereas military families embody resilience, strength, and courage as they provide unwavering support to our nation's service members, and their contributions are essential to the health, security, and safety of our nation. And whereas it is incumbent upon all of us to show our profound gratitude for the dedication and commitment of our military and veteran families, whose service strengthens our communities and our nation. And whereas supporting military families through expanded resources for health, economic opportunities, and mental wellness is crucial to sustaining the strength of our military and the nation as a whole. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Sanchez, do hereby proclaim November 2025 as National Veterans and Military Families Month 2025 in the city of Oceanside. I call upon our residents and visitors to honor our veterans and military families with appropriate ceremonies and activities, and to share information on the resources available to them. Let us celebrate their courage, their resilience, and their unwavering dedication to our nation. Thank you. And Lori is a very, very important person at the Veterans Association of North County. She is, they couldn't operate without her, let me, let's just say. So Lori, thank you for everything that you do and for the service that everyone does for us.
Thank you very much.
There.
On behalf of the only 1% of our U.S. citizens who join the U.S. military and their families, I want to take, thank you very much, Mayor, for honoring the military. And remember, whether you're actually in the service, serving, or you're a spouse or a family member, they all serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. And we have a picture if the council can join. Thank you, Lori. All right, next is a proclamation in honor of National Native American Heritage Month. Whereas like our great nation, the history and culture of our local community and state began with the history and culture of Native American indigenous peoples. And today we have the captain of the Luiseño San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians, Mel Vernon. And others. Do you have other people? Yes. Come on down, everybody. Got tribal members here.
If you're a tribal member, come on down.
Whereas like our great nation, the history and culture of our local community and state began with the history and culture of Native American and indigenous peoples. And whereas we acknowledge the Payong Kowichum, people of the West, have called the North, San Diego County and Camp Pendleton region home for more than 10,000 years. And today, known as the Luiseño people, are represented by several, by seven bands and tribes: La Jolla, Palapauma, Pechanga, Rincon, San Luis Rey, and Suboba. And whereas the contributions of Native Americans have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today. The customs and traditions of Native Americans are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States and our city of Oceanside. And whereas evidence of tribal cultural resources found throughout our region prove that the Luiseños have a long history and a rich culture that existed before first European contact, arrival of the Spanish missionaries, Mexican rule, and the establishment of the United States. And the Luiseños have survived every challenge, generation after generation, adapting to meet changing times and circumstances with great optimism. And whereas we celebrate our commitments to respect and preserve the rich Native American history and traditions in our city of Oceanside. And whereas the most sacred responsibility of the Luiseño people is to preserve and protect their ancestral territory, and the city of Oceanside has been an exceptional partner for the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians in a united, excuse me, unified commitment to honor and protect historical and cultural sites. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim November 2025 as National Native American Heritage Month in the city of Oceanside, continuing our commitment to work with the San Luis Rey Band Tribe in the preservation of our shared cultural heritage. I urge all residents and visitors to observe this month by enjoying Native American Heritage programs, ceremonies, and activities, including the Spirit of the Valley Kiichya Nights Coyote Dreams, celebrating the arts and culture of the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians this Saturday, November 8th, 2025, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Got it, 10:00 a.m., starting at 10:00. And you can't miss it because it's wonderful, every single minute, here at Heritage Park in Oceanside. So thank you. Thank you for this wonderful relationship that we have with the tribe. And I'm going to hand the mic to the captain, who is basically the leader of the tribe, and he will introduce everyone that's here.
But first, thank you. Thank you, Esther. Thank you, Oceanside. As the captain of the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians, I deeply, I am deeply honored to accept this proclamation from the city of Oceanside, recognizing Native American Heritage Month. For generations, our Luiseño ancestors have cared for this land, passing down traditions, stories, and language that define who we are today. This recognition is more than a proclamation. It is a reminder of our resilience, our history, and our ongoing responsibility to preserve and share our culture. On behalf of our tribe, I thank the city of Oceanside for honoring our heritage and supporting our journey forward. Thank you. So I think I'll just pass the mic down, let them introduce themselves. We have some council people here and some members, so.
Hello. Hello, my name is Michael Serta, I'm an assistant to a council member.
Roberta Estrada, council member.
And a great Indian bread maker.
I bake, I sell it.
Charlotte.
Okay. Charlotte is a great Indian bread maker.
That's true, along with a lot of other helpers. I'm Charlotte Herrera, and I'm the treasurer. Thank you.
So you're the one behind all the great food.
I'm Diana Cardell, and I'm a member of the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians. And please come and join us because I will be doing baskets all day long, so come by and please make one. Thank you.
And if I could, you want to lead?
I'm Leslie Escobal, assistant to a council member and also a bread maker.
Rosemary Flores, tribal member.
And salsa maker.
Bobby John Garcia, a council member, and I just want to, I just, it's great to be a community within a community. You know, our community and your community work together for the same goal, you know, and Carlos Flores, assistant to council member. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll see you Saturday at 10 o'clock. I have a lot of, a lot of things going on there, drums, flutes, and stories, and dancing, all even.
And fry bread.
And fry bread. Yeah, and, oh yeah. Oh, yes.
We have some more.
You got some more? And there is cards that have Luiseño words on them. And so, and that's our program, of course. But thank you so much, and we'd like to see you coming down there. It's a wonderful experience, and it's, it's small, so get there early.
It needs a small place, but there is so much that, that there will be drumming, there will be all kinds of things. Do you want to say a few things about, about it?
Well, well, we're going to have Pablo Talk Elementary School is going to be doing, actually, I think they're performing Kiichya Nights Coyote Dreams. It's a story that I wrote. And also Facet Elementary is going to be maybe doing Mel and the Blue Arrow, which is another story acting out. So that's, that's an honor. But just to come, there's going to be basket, not only my sister basket making, but there's going to be basket demonstrations. There'll be other people, their organizations showing that preserving native plants, I think, Preserve Calaver is going to be there. And so it's part of the community that's working together and, well, drums and flutes, that's, that's for sure. Oh, Tracy Nelson's going to be there. That's what it was. And Brandon Wallace doing some blues. Tracy Nelson was one of the players in Redbone that came out, that famous song called Come and Get Your Love. That's always a big hit. So thank you, one more time.
Some sponsors included.
Oh, this, I think.
Studio Ace.
Studio, okay, Studio Ace, for sure. And I think Julia's going to probably say more about it. All right.
Right, thank you. And if the council members could join for a picture, this is really, truly, a very special relationship that we have, a very big part of the history of Oceanside. Thank you. And the last one that we have is Mayor's Business Spotlight starring Julia Pfister, who is the owner of Studio Ace, a real artist on the Arts Commission. And this is, as you know, this is a joint venture between the Chamber of Commerce and, and the mayor's office. This has been a tradition for a while. And so we honor a, always honor a business in Oceanside. And today we're honoring, tonight we're honoring Julia Pfister, who really is an icon here in Oceanside. She's really made her presence known. And you just heard about the program that's coming this Saturday, well, she's very much a part of that. And we love her. Thank you for everything that you do for the city of Oceanside, Julia. And I'm going to hand the mic over.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Carlson. I'm the events and program specialist at Oceanside at Chamber of Commerce. And this was a no-brainer, Julia. We love you as, I'm going to pair Esther as what she said because you are such a staple in our community, and I'm going to read a little bit of a bio just so we can have an idea. So you are the executive director and co-founder of Studio Ace, which is a nonprofit organization dedicated to providing arts opportunities in North County, San Diego community, arts, community, and education. Studio Ace. They officially opened their doors in 2018. They're located right next to the Mission Branch Library, which is 3861 Mission Avenue, in case you weren't aware of that. They have art classes, camps, workshops for all ages, no matter your skill level. You can learn to paint, watercolor, draw, and all of that. There's so much happening. And I wanted to personally thank you because I look fondly back on my times with being one of your members at Studio Ace, whether we were painting pumpkins, learning embroidery, visiting the art galley, or even shopping in the store. We appreciate you and your team. You're always extremely welcoming in that incredible space that has all types of activities. Congratulations for this recognition.
And the Spirit of the Valley was something that you and others came up with, yes?
Exactly. We worked in conjunction with, with Mel Vernon and with Linda Callis, and we sat down about five years ago and, and talked about how we could really bring the, bring more knowledge to the city of Oceanside about the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians. And, and Mel really has just served as, as bringing the past to the present and also bringing us forward as a community. So just amazing.
Yeah, and this has been with also the Mission, the San Luis Rey Mission. Yeah, so again, this Saturday.
And also the Public Library as well. OCAF is in there, the Friends of the Library, the Miramid Museum as well.
And it's the fifth annual, right?
Yes, fifth annual, for sure.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you for everything that you do, Julia. Thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a closed session report. Mr. Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. There was no meeting in closed session today.
Thank you. Next is the consent calendar items, items two through 15. Have there been any requests to pull any items by the public?
We've received a request to pull item number four and item number 10.
All right, is there a motion for the balance?
I'd like to pull 13.
Okay. And a motion for the balance?
I'll make a motion, approve the balance.
All right, is there a second? I'll go ahead and second that. There's a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number four on the consent is staff recommend, city council approve a change order to increase an existing purchase order with Vulcan materials for asphalt in the amount of $230,000 for a revised total of $330,000. Approve the purchase as a sole source justification and authorize the financial services director or designate to execute the change order. And.
Jimmy Not.
Mr. Not, anyone else?
No.
Okay. Mr. Not.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Not, 127 Sherri Lane. Today, when I went in to pay my rent and my park, my manager, who has suffered a recent hip injury, was telling me about her troubles around the city and how that there's areas in our city that need to be addressed with a lot of the potholes. And I'm encouraging you to definitely take some of this asphalt material and address those, especially areas like the entryways, 76, 78, and the Long Coast Highway. Because if you have a hip injury and you go along and you hit any of the potholes, it hurts. So if you could take that into consideration, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Not. I'll go ahead and move approval. Is there a second?
Sir.
There's a motion, a second, please vote. Oh, did you want to speak? I'm sorry.
Really briefly. I was just going to ask staff, we do a, we have to update our paving plan every three years, and that's coming up soon, right? Okay, just double checking. Thank you.
All right, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 10, staff recommend, city council approve one addition to fleet vehicle for the Parks and Rec Department. Purchase order to Leith Ford in the amount of $122,337 for one addition to fleet vehicle and two replacement vehicles for the building division in the Department Services Department. Approve a purchase order of, to LEHR in the amount of $4,078 to upfit the vehicles. Approve a purchase order to GNW Truck Accessories in the amount of $7,472 for the purchase of two truck bed shells for the Ford Maverick vehicles. Approve a $10,000 contingency for any changes to costs of procurement and or upfitting, and authorize the financial services director or designate to execute the purchases order upon receipt of all supporting documents. Is, Ms. Diane?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, Diane Nygaard, representing Preserve Calaveria. We love it when we can catch the city doing something good that we didn't even know anything about. These three vehicles are hybrid, reducing the city's use of fossil fuels. You had to read the small print in the staff report to find that out. Thank you. Thank you for taking this important step in the right direction and, and the city setting an example for sustainability. We do note that other cities in our region have an action item in their climate action plans to convert the city fleets to clean fuel. We do not, but if we did, Oceanside could claim the greenhouse gas emission reductions from these three vehicles in any future. from these three vehicles in any future ones like this. And that would be good for the taxpayers of Oceanside. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and move approval. Is there a second? Councilmember Weiss, my apologies.
I just have a question for staff. Don't we have a green fleet policy?
The answer is yes, but he's
Yes. Honorable Mayor, members of the council.
How many more steps do you need for $10,000? And we can have you
Yes, we do have, Councilmember Weiss, as you mentioned, we have a green fleet policy. We are actually in the process of updating that policy, including changes about the electric vehicle charging stations and policies for use of electric vehicles and such. We do have a green fleet policy, and these purchases are in compliance with that policy.
Thank you.
And that was Hameed Baudhori, who is our Public Works Director.
My apologies.
Thank you. All right. Okay, there's a motion, a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 13, staff recommends City Council approve the creation of 30 provisional fuels, crew member hourly extra help positions under the existing Hand Crew Program, which is Measure X budget. Approve the new classification and salary and authorize the reclassification of the fiscal year 2025-26 Hand Crew Program appropriation of $300,000 to the appropriate object codes.
Thank you, Mayor. I pulled this, and I did ask the fire chief to come on down because I'm going to have a question for him. And I plan on supporting this item. This is something that's kind of been in the works for a long time. But I had one concern, and in the staff report, it talks about the crews being able to be used outside of Oceanside. And I think it's important that we get as much work in. Can you want to just explain a little bit how that would work?
Absolutely. Honorable Mayor, council members, David Parsons, fire chief. Councilmember Robinson, thanks for the question. So the primary focus of the Hand Crew is going to be the city of Oceanside. We've already had conversations with the Department of Public Works and some of the needs they have or some of the resources we can provide to assist them with working within city limits. We're also actively seeking grants to be able to do vegetation reduction, fuel reduction in our community and vulnerable communities that don't have maybe the resources available to take care of defensible space issues around communities that maybe HOAs don't have a lot of money in them. And so grants are available for that sort of thing. We'll be actively seeking those out, and they do exist. It's important to remember that in the, within the last, I think it's four months, we've adopted new fire hazard severity zone maps. And the fire hazard severity zones within the city of Oceanside increased greatly. So there's going to be more need for project work within the city of Oceanside. That said, origins of fires, you know, they don't respect borders. So we are going to work on intergovernmental agreements with Camp Pendleton, Vista, Fallbrook, Carlsbad, the Buena Vista Lagoon, because the origins of these fires begins in those areas more often than not. And they move and they threaten our city. So we'll have priorities, but we're going to be doing work that's going to benefit the entire North County with Oceanside being the primary beneficiary subsequent to that. Also, you know, the city is, we're a medium-sized city. So in terms of resources and getting project work done, we want this to be a fiscally sustainable program. There's probably not enough total work within the city to make that happen. So we are going to need to seek outside work once we take care of the city, so that we're not asking for any general fund money because that's never been the intent of the program. We want it to be self-sustaining. And we think it very easily can be so, often in the future. The goals are vegetation reduction, community safety, workforce development, and then, of course, emergency response will be a potential component of that authority.
Thanks, Chief. You answered all my questions. Congratulations, FD. I know this program you've been after for a long time. So I'm going to move the item.
Thank you.
All right, I'll go ahead and second. There's a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. General item, item number 16. Staff recommends City Council introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 6, Articles 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 12, 13, 16, and Chapter 11, Article 2 of the Oceanside City Code to reflect adoption of the 2025 additions of the California Building Standards Code, including local amendments, and adopt a resolution of express findings supporting the local amendments. And we are going to hear from Timothy Kirsch, Chief Building Official.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. My name is Tim Kirsch, and I'm your Chief Building Official. I'm here tonight to present the ordinance and resolution adopting the 2025 California Building Standard Codes, including Oceanside's local amendments. As you know, the state of California updates these codes every three years to reflect new construction technology, energy efficiency requirements, and safety standards. The 2025 addition takes effect statewide on January 1st, 2026, and will remain in place till 2028. To remain compliant with state law, the city must update Chapter 6, Articles 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, 11, and Chapter 11, Article 2 of the Oceanside Municipal Code. This is to align with the 2025 standard. This action also gives us the opportunity to fine-tune our local administrative and technical amendments to better fit Oceanside's climatic, geographical, and topographical condition. Some of the proposed changes include returning the permit expiration period to one year, where we'll be ending a COVID-era extension, correcting the Appeal Board membership to five members, with three required for a quorum, requiring fire protection plans in wildland urban interface areas, updating secondary fire access standards for new development, and aligning hydrant spacing and sprinkler requirements with our current fire safety standard. Together, these changes improve safety, consistency, and efficiency in how we apply and enforce the codes locally. Staff recommends the City Council introduce the ordinance and adopt a resolution of express findings in support of the 2025 code updates, including Oceanside's local amendments. Thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
We do not.
Okay. To the council, then. Is there a motion? Councilmember Weiss.
Move approval, staff recommendation.
Thank you.
I'll second.
There's a motion, a second, please vote.
Does, do we need to introduce the ordinance?
Oh, yes. Mr. Burke, please title the ordinance.
Somebody's asleep tonight. This is the first reading and introduction of an ordinance of the city of Oceanside amending Chapter 6 and Chapter 11 of the Oceanside City Code by the adoption of the 2025 additions of the California Building Residential, Electrical, Mechanical, Plumbing, Energy, Green Building Standards, and Fire Codes in the 2024 Uniform Swimming Pool, Spa, and Hot Tub Code.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Let's see, we can go to item number 23, advanced request, reserved time to speak. Mr. Layton?
Yeah, I would think it's appropriate to honor the 12-year-old who was out fishing with his dad on Sunday. And he used his skills he got from being a junior lifeguard to help save five people that were in the water because their boat overturned. And there was national media, including Good Morning America this morning. But anyway, I think it says a lot about the young man and also the Junior Lifeguard Program. Now onto something completely different. While Oceanside is inundated by high-rise stack-and-pack developments that nobody in Oceanside who lives here wants, there is one civic embarrassment who isn't actually a developer, but he calls himself a developer. And he comes before the council and he gets these developments approved, like the one at the top, right up here at Peerview Way on Horn Street, that empty lot that is, that was, its plans are a complete joke. And then he also went to the end of, he wanted to build, he wanted to stack metal storage crates on top of each other, overlooking Cavalier Mobile Home Park. And he, and he got it passed by the City Council. How did he do it? Well, he figured out that by giving money, his, his name is Howard Jacobs, that by giving money to the City Council, he could get his preposterously awful developments approved. And all he wanted to do is get them approved and then sell them for a high profit to anybody who would buy them. Well, the irony is, no one wants to buy his crap because it's such a joke. And thank God that no one wants to play his little game. But, but the point is, is that he gives, his whole game is to give money to the City Council members. And there's a Howard Jacobs tote board. And at the top of it is Christopher Rodriguez. And right behind him, just moving into second place now, it's sort of like a horse derby, is Mr. Robinson because he just got a $5,000 donation. And that moved him up to like about just under $10,000 from what he's got from Howard Jacobs. And I think that it's important to note that there is a law in the state of California called the Levine Act. And that says that if you get $500, this is a state law, folks, that if you get $500 from, say, a developer, that you can't vote on that person's project for at least 12 months. Well, obviously, Mr. Levine is betting for some future that Mr. Robinson will come around and he'll be here. And it looks like he will be here because there's no one going to run against him. And good, good for you, sir. But the point is, there's a state law, and the spirit of the law suggests that if you take money from somebody, you shouldn't vote on their project. So all I'm suggesting, sir, that if, you know, unlike Christopher Rodriguez or Corey Jensen, and now you who are on this Howard Jacobs tote board, that you could just simply say, "I'm going to recuse myself from voting on any project from anybody who gives me money." Now, from what I gather, from what I've heard before, is you're probably going to say, "Well, I don't get involved with that stuff. That's all my campaign treasurer's kind of stuff. I don't pay attention." Well, the point is, is your campaign treasurer is famous for gaming the system, using the city of Oceanside as a cash box, getting, getting her 10 or 15 or whatever it is percent. And, and if you are gauging your, how you accept money for your campaign by what your campaign treasurer gives you or says to you because she gets a direct cut, I would suggest that's, that doesn't smell very good. The mayor got a donation from the Antichrist Fishbok, who is really, the neighborhoods hate him for what he's done for short-term mental. She gave it back. Mr. Figueroa wouldn't touch his blood money because of what he represents and what he wants to get done. I suggest
Thank you.
You think about.
Thank you very much. Item number 24, we have five speakers. Let's go ahead and get started.
Our first speaker is Mary Davis, to be followed by Diane Nygaard, to be followed by Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Hi, good evening. I was hoping to get Ivana White to hold this. But Mary Davis, Regional Watchdog and Accountability Partner. And I'm here to remind everybody that this is my third appearance or request to have, for you to have blown the flag. The Marines give it all, literally their lives, blood, sweat, and tears. It's a shame they're having to go to food banks to get food during the shutdown. And we can't even honor them with more than a piece of paper. You were ready for the Pride Movement to give them a whole month on the flagpole. And yet you would not do the same for our Marines, our beloved Leathernecks. So I'm inviting everybody who's interested. I will be here back at the Plaza Monday, November 10. And I will be holding my own display with a little stand. And probably from about 10:00 to 4:00 is when I aim to do it. So please stop by, say hi, honor our Marines. They are the bread, butter, and economic ace engine of this city. And so I'm saying, please honor them with more than just a piece of paper. Ooh rah. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Nygaard, followed by Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council, Diane Nygaard, representing Preserve Calavera. Last month, you tabled the Oceanside Transit Center project. You'll be hearing it again at your next meeting. But because the public hearing was closed, we would not be able to comment at that meeting. So tonight, I'm here to say something that we have only said three times in our 25-year history. We support this project. Toll Brothers worked hard to address community concerns, and they set the bar high on a number of issues. It's an all-electric project, complies with our cap, includes 15% affordable transportation demand management plan for all uses, and free passes for everybody who lives or works in that facility. We also note that with the passage of SB 79 that allows up to nine-story buildings within a quarter mile of transit centers, if this project is not approved, we are very likely to get something far worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Arlene Hammerschmidt, followed by Leo Chapinski.
Mayor and Council, thank you for this time, and thank you for your service. Earlier this week, there was an ethics code of violation complaint filed with the clerk, of which I'm going to try to read part of. This is an official complaint against Mayor Esther Sanchez for breaches of the city of Oceanside Code of Ethics and Conduct for elected and appointed officials adopted in 2020. We ask that the mayor recuse and remove herself from the council chambers for the entire council agenda, item number 22, and be publicly censored by the city council for these breaches of the Code of Ethics. There are two links included on that complaint. Somebody? And they are of the specific Code of Conduct breach, which was unduly using the mayor's power to influence the vote of the Parks and Recreation Commission twice. This is one. I'm sorry, there was this, I apologize for this. Stop. Thank you. One was whether to bring what is item 22 to our council meeting tonight. And the other was speaking in favor of closing down the Standing Committee of the Parks and Recreation Commission, which was tasked with investigating and finding solutions to the inequitable allocation of Parks and Recreation facilities. It is inappropriate. It's inappropriate, it's It's inappropriate, it's beyond, it's maybe, it may not be illegal, it certainly is unethical. I would ask the mayor, please to recuse yourself from item 22, per your signature on the signature page of this code of ethics, which as I recall, you supported-
Thank you.
-with your vote in 2020.
Leo Chapinsky, followed by Jimmy Naught.
Mayor, City Council, Staff Sergeant Chapinsky, veteran of two wars, 70 to 81 in the Marines. And then at age 48, from 2001 to 2004 in Army National Guard. Come before you and ask you to please, please help me get a 90-day, no, let's go with 30 days, 90 days is much to ask. 30 days, safe parking. This particular request is dated back five decades ago to a little girl by the name of Greta Demolay in Holland, who came here at 12 years of age and at 18 became a United States Marine. During that period of time, she was married and had two children. Unfortunately, the husband, for whatever reason, tried to kill her. I don't know if it was cooking or what it was, but anyways, that's, that's that. She ended up with one child with her still now. The other one is back in the East Coast. I met Greta at Interfaith the two years we were there. Great lady, super lady. Just spent the last six months putting together a tiny home all by herself. She's got a nice truck with her 100% disability. I'm supposed to drive her out to Freedom in Arkansas. Unfortunately, her son, who's with her, has been saying things that even a sailor wouldn't say to a Marine. The bottom line is, he's been breaking up her stuff and she fears for her safety. She needs help to get to Arkansas. I would like to drive her, but I need safe parking. I need a place where I can put one of my cars so it's safe for 30 days while I get her there and start her, her, um, her utilities and various things like that, and put security around her acre of land and, and help her survive. And so I, I need that, I need that, I really do. We, we in Oceanside, the homeless, I just lost three good friends who passed away, one from pneumonia and two from fentanyl. And we're losing a lot of our homeless through various things. And I don't want to see her lost. You talk about the, the Marine Corps. Ooh rah, Semper Fi. Happy birthday. Why do we have so many homeless Marines on the street with no shelter? Thank goodness for Brother Benno's for breakfast anyway. But we need shelter. And for those of us that have cars, because we're very blessed, I worked for 62 years, and I'm very blessed to have vehicles. And so it doesn't rain on me, it doesn't get real cold with me, even though I don't have a heater. We just need some help. And I do need some safe parking for 30 days. I don't know where we can get it, but please, try to find one for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy Naught.
Mayor, council members, remember, remember the 5th of November. There once was a hang nation ruled by this king and his rubber-stamped legislature, the parliament. And they had a prejudice against a certain group of people. They were Catholic. And they had a lot of unaddressed needs in their country. And they had a lack of justice. People were taken off the street and tortured by these masked ruffians of the state. They were also led into other areas. Some of them disappeared. There were plans that were made and actions taken, and there came the point of no return. And what took place is that these people got together and said, we can't take it anymore. And there was a gentleman by the name Guy Fox, who organized a group with gunpowder. He put it underneath the parliament building there. And they stored up enough that it would have blown to shreds with the parliament and the king. But one of the girlfriends of one of the planners snitched on them, at least to say they paid the price. They were guillotined or executed. But this is something I think should be done in the sense of, we need to learn lessons. We don't need to drive our people to the point of desperation. Whether it's homeless on the street, whether it's people that don't have enough to eat and we're pressuring them, whether it's housing, whether, you know, there's a lot of things that are endlessly unaddressed. Do we all have to become Guy Fox and celebrate a Guy Fox Day? Remember, remember the 5th of November.
Thank you. We have about five minutes until 6 o'clock, so we're going to go ahead and take a quick break here. Our remaining items are public hearing items. We'll begin with item number 17. We have, I think, five public hearing items. Going to get started with item number 17. Staff recommends city council adopt a resolution continuing the temporary closure of Lagoon View Drive while reserving access solely for emergency response vehicles and various maintenance activities. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and our correspondence.
Staff only.
All right. I was present for the previous hearings, also had received at the time and reviewed correspondence from the public that actually had been complaining about the unlawful parking of vehicles and the debris. All of that was actually before the closure and have not received any further comments from the public. And when our other council members come back, they'll, they'll also do disclosures. Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
We do not.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and begin with a presentation by Mr. Brian Thomas, our city engineer. Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Brian Thomas, city engineer. Tonight before you is Lagoon View Drive temporary road closure for consideration. Staff is recommending that the city council adopt a resolution ordering the continuance of the previously approved temporary closures of Lagoon View Drive for an additional 18-month period while reserving access for emergency vehicles as well as general maintenance and storm drain maintenance requirements. Lagoon View Drive was originally a part of State Route 14 connecting Oceanside to Vista prior to construction of State Route 78. Once this construction was completed, the State Route 14 was relinquished to the city for public road purposes. Currently, Buena Vista Lagoon to the south of Lagoon View Drive is classified as a protected waters of the United States. The initial road closure was to protect these habitat waters while minimizing adverse environmental impacts caused by illegal dumping, camping and criminal activities. Lagoon View Drive is currently not open to through traffic, but is currently used for helicopter evacuations of crash victims from surrounding highways and is also used as a means for emergency response during fires, hazardous spills and rescues. The road is also used to maintain a dual 72-inch storm drain that outfalls into the lagoon. As the sole owner of all adjacent parcels, the state of California was notified by certified mail of tonight's public hearing. Under CVC Section 21101.4, the city can authorize a temporary closure of roadways when the local authority finds and determines that serious and continual criminal activity or illegal dumping exists. Council made this determination in 2022. Temporary closures can be carried out only via the public hearing process and only for a period of 18 months for a total maximum period of 13 and a half years or a total of nine closures. Tonight's request is the second extension or the third overall request for closure. This is a map showing the, the limits of Lagoon View Drive. So in conclusion, the proposed resolution will allow for the continued closure of Lagoon View Drive for the next 18 months, at which time staff will bring back a recommendation to either close, continue the closure or to rescind the closure in favor of other prescribed uses. It's staff's recommendation that the council adopt the resolution while continuing the temporary closure and reserving access for emergency vehicles and that for storm drain control.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Thank you.
I am available for any question.
Thank you. Do we have anyone that has signed up to speak?
We do not have any registered speakers.
This is a time for the public to address this item. It is a public hearing, so you did not have to have signed up to speak on this. If you wish to address this issue, please rise, approach the podium, state your name, and you have up to three minutes. Seeing no one rising, I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and come back to the council. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion in second. Councilmember Figueroa?
I just have one question for staff. I know that the ERF project, the Encampment Resolution Fund, has been doing work in what we call Zone 2 from Haymar down, well, from Carlsbad to by the mall area. Have we been in this area at all and has there been a need to be in this area based on even just like walk, like folks walking through there? Do, do we know if the Encampment Resolution Fund team has been in there?
There, there's only been a few instances of any activity in the area where code enforcement has cleaned up a few minor encampments, but there's been no vehicle camping. And like I said, the pedestrian camps have been very small and relatively few and far between. A lot less than there were before the closure. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to plug that maybe, maybe in the future, we can look at ways that we can utilize this space for our people. I mean, it seems like a cool little walking path, I don't know, balancing between, you know, safety and, and being able to see the, the lagoon there. I know there's a lot of folks who use the trails on the other side of the lagoon, so it's just always struck me as a nice little place for an overlook or something, so. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion in second. Please vote. Excuse me. Yeah, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 18, staff recommends city council adopt resolution, resolutions approving rate adjustments for calendar year 2026 and 2027 for water, recycled water and wastewater. I'm going to go ahead and call this a continued hearing to order. We do have Fred, Fred Mayo, Water Utilities Director, who will be presenting the staff report addressing city council's direction given on October 1st. And so, Mr. Mayo? And we, the public hearing part of it has closed, correct? Yes. That is to say that the, the part of where the public can address this item has closed. And we are at, further deliberations by the city council.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez and city council members. My name is Fred Mayo. I am the new Water Utility Director, and I will be here presenting on the water and wastewater rates. This is a continuation of the rate increase that we previously talked about on October 4th, where council directors to evaluate impacts and reduce rates. For some reason, the PowerPoint is not working. Give me one moment.
Sure.
The original proposed rate increase is 6% for water, 4% for wastewater in 2026 and in year 2027, effective January 1. Per council direction, we reduced the rate increase in the first year by half and kept the rate increase the same as the previously proposed for the second year. A presentation will show the impacts on city operations in 2026. Real, the original, the following slide shows a quick cost breakdown of department's overall operating costs for fiscal year 26. These projected costs help determine the rates to ensure full cost recovery for the department. Just over half of that is the San Diego County Water Authority and Metropolitan Water District, 52%. The remainder of this is a city's O&amp;M cost and our debt service to pay back low interest This slide shows the comparison of the water rate increase between the previous and the current proposed rate increases and impacts to the city. The first year fiscal year 2025 and 26 reduced our debt coverage from a 1.46 down to 1.32. In addition, our debt covenants require we maintain above a 1.25 multiplier. Falling below this limit could result with higher interest rates and costs when securing bonds and loans, which we will need to complete our capital projects. The reduced rate increase makes us susceptible to dropping below this limit, such as 1% reduction in water sales, which would drop us down below that 1.25 minimum requirement. The reserves will decrease slightly due to the reduced rate increase from just over $90 million to slightly under $80, $90 million. A large decrease in reserves in the second year are due to the two major capital improvement projects that is expected to begin construction in 2026. These include the Mason, the Mission Basin groundwater well expansion and the brine minimization projects. It also includes the downtown water and sewer pipeline replacement. The latter will be presented to the city council on December 17th for contract award. It is important to note that based on the size of our city and operation and infrastructure, it is advisable that we maintain a minimum of $60 million on hand. This means we cannot spend down all of our resources here. Following chart shows a comparison of the proposed increase for a typical monthly bill for a medium-tier, single-family residential user of 12 HCFs. The darker blue bars are the San Diego County Water Authority and Metropolitan Water District's rate increases that are passed through charges. The lighter blue bars on this graph are the costs for the city portion. With the reduced rate increases, we are currently proposing for water. This is an increase of about $1.48 for our customers per month on the bill for the first year. The second year, the increase will be minimal, but it'll still be slightly increased. The lion's share of the increase are, to our bills are associated with the external agency charges- The lion's share of the increase to our bills are associated with the external agency charges that are outside of the city's control. I want to note that the San Diego County Water Authority adopted rate increases for 2026, so the 2027 SDCWA rates are based on a median of a published-to-high-low rates available at the time. Switching over to wastewater. This shows the reduction of rate increases between the previous proposal for rate increase of 4% for year 1, 4% for year 2, and 2% in year 1 and 4% for year 2. This shows the reduced rate impacts to our debt coverage and reserves. The debt coverage limit similar to water is a 1.25 multiplier and is in much higher above 5 this first year and 33 in the second year. This is because the city will be paying off one of our revolving, state revolving funds at the end of the year. That was part of the SLRWRF major upgrades. However, the upcoming sewer capital projects that will need to be completed in order to decommission the La Salina wastewater plant, plus much other needed improvements, will require loan and bonding to fully fund the remaining of debt coverage. In addition, these reserves will also drop drastically, similar to water. The wastewater reserves should not drop below a set limit of approximately 40. On this chart, a comparison of the proposed rate increase for the typical monthly bill for a medium-tier, single-family residential with a winter quarterly average between 6 to 7 HCF. Unlike water, wastewater only has city charges. This shows the previous proposed 4% first year and 4% second compared to the newly proposed 2 and 4%. The new rates proposed increase the monthly bill reduces it down from 258 to $1.30 a month. Year 2 will also have minimum increases. In summary, the revised rate increase for the first year, while maintaining the proposed increase for the second year, will reduce revenues and have impacts to operations with reduced minimal impacts to our customers. To mitigate reduced revenues, the following alternatives are proposed with minimal decrease to quality of service to our customers. This includes a proposed credit card convenience charge of 1.5%, eliminating non-emergency after-hours service costs and strategic budget saving by maintaining some key position policies. It should be noted a $2.4 million reduction in year 1 and an additional $124,000 reduction in year 2 with this proposed rate increase. Staff's recommendation that the city council continue the public hearing of 10/125 and adopt the resolutions approving the rate adjustments for calendar year 26 and 27, which includes the city rates and the external agency pass-through rates and charges. That concludes my presentation. I'm available along with Alex Bugbee from Corolla, a rate consultant, Mabel, our senior engineer manager, and I also have Terry Burge from San Diego County Water Authority.
Thank you. So that's Deputy General Manager Tish Berg who's here.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. All right, so we are still at the council. We're not, we have already heard from the, from the public. So again, we do have a representative from the Water Authority here if anyone wishes to speak, have a question of the Water Authority. Councilmember Weiss.
I move approval of the reduced rate recommendation.
All right. Any other council members wishing to speak? All right. I'm going to go ahead. You can have a seat over. I appreciate very much the desire by the council members to find a way to reduce the costs of water. It's one of the utilities. Obviously, we have to have water. We have to have electricity, and we are so used to hearing about what SDGNE or Edison and how much they make. In fact, I think this past year, they've made so much more money than ever, the corporate folks, and it just seems like, wow, why can't they cut us a break, especially for seniors, especially for those who are on fixed income? We are not, the City of Oceanside is not a corporate entity, and we, the City of Oceanside does not make profits. City of Oceanside does not give bonuses if we come in at a certain amount. All of those things that you think about in corporate America is not what the city does or, or can do. On the council dais here, for 25 years, we have struggled with trying to make sure that we have the lowest costs possible for water, for our water. And especially when we had the drought, we had, obviously, water was even costing even more because of the drought and because of the scarcity of water. There have been projects that have been suggested to try to increase water. Also, we had directives to reduce our use of water, and always, always, that has come with the belief that if you use less water, you're going to pay less. And in fact, that hasn't ever been the case. But we have, at the water, at our utilities department, have always tried to figure out how we can ensure that we have the lowest possible cost of water. And the kind of things that we've suggested have never been things that would end up costing more. For example, the D-SAL plant in Carlsbad, that project that ended up being first a private project and then the Water Authority ended up going forward and doing that, that is the, the highest cost of water is produced by D-SAL. Why? Because it has, it uses so much energy to produce that water. If that, if that project hadn't gone forward, could we be now looking at lower rates? Yes. But we have that, and we have that for the duration, and certainly, if there's ever a drought, we're going to be happy to have it there, right? But for us, our bottom dollar amount is what it actually costs us to produce water. And anything that we do to take away from that, we will feel. We will feel in lesser services. I think that the staff report does include that, that, you know, we will not be able to respond to calls after 5:00. There are some other things, the quality of the water, you may notice a different taste. Throughout this time, we've been so, so much trying to get to that amount that, in fact, we have ended up losing people, very valuably, very valuable, trained people, very, very specific with respect to water. They've left because they haven't been able to get higher pay because other, other agencies offer higher pay. So we've had problems trying to attract because of the pay. So I just want to let, make sure everyone understands, especially the part about losing our credit rating, because there's one thing that we were able to get, and that is very, very low interest loan through the federal, through the federal government because of our great credit rating, because of the excellent work that our department did. And so now, we're potentially looking at possible problems with that, and that is a big concern to me. It didn't, it wasn't as important when I first got on the council because I didn't think it would be that important, but having been on the council now for 25 years, believe me, this is something that, you know, we, we charge what we charge, that is the absolute cost of water. So I, but I understand the desire, you know, it's Prop 218, so we cannot charge certain people more to be able to charge certain people less. That is a law that we, we cannot, we cannot do that. In order to lower any kind of cost, it would actually mean getting it from the general fund and not impact our water rates. But let me tell you, $2 million, $3 million is not going to be very much, but it would mean a lot in the general fund. We would actually lose out a lot of other things. So balancing everything out, I hope that we understand that, that this is something that, you know, we're just charging exactly what the cost of water is. Does staff have any other comments to make at this point?
I would just, I would just echo the things that you mentioned. I mean, I think that it is, A, true that we, we do not make a profit, obviously. What, it's what I like to describe as zero-sum game. What comes in goes, stays in the system, so any costs that go up have to be paid for by the waters, the monies that come in, and if money doesn't come in, then costs have to go down somewhere, and that means a sacrifice somewhere. And so that's what I would say, yeah.
We do have some vacancies. I know that, you know, most of us have worked, who had to deal with having less people at work, know what that feels like. It's a lot. It's a big, it's a big problem when you don't have a full, you know, staffing. So Councilmember Figueroa.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank our Water Utilities Director for coming, taking on this new position and working with council to bring back this revised rate proposal and meeting with us individually. You know, as I mentioned to staff, and I know members of the council mentioned, as utility rates are going up, more families are feeling the burden, our senior community with even food insecurity rising, the cost of living rising, housing, and so for staff to work with council to bring this revised rate, but also make it very clear and transparent in regards of where we're at with our debt coverage obligations as well, and just being fiscally responsible and bringing back this rate, and also being, being able to explain the difference between what the San Diego Water Authority is increasing and what part of that is the City of Oceanside and what part of that is the San Diego Water Authority. I just want to thank staff for taking the time to meet with council, but also to bring back this revised rate. And so I don't know if anyone else has second, but I would, I would second the motion.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any other requests? Deputy Mayor Joyce.
I would just, because part of the issue with, part of the issue with like water and energy is we don't really know what the season's going to look like, and so it's really hard to project how much water or energy will be used any given season. We have some idea, but if it's an extra wet or an extra dry season, then that throws all of our stuff out of balance. And so I just, is there a good time for us to check in on this, to see if we need to make a mid-year or an early season adjustment to, to respond to a season that is, that is hurting our water department? I just, I recognize that this proposal is cutting our department thin, and I just want to know what kind of responsiveness we have. How, how quickly can we respond with changing rates? I mean, there's a process that's regulated, so I'm just curious about that.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Joyce, sorry, I didn't, or Deputy Mayor Joyce, I didn't introduce myself last time. Michael Gossman, Assistant City Manager. I am, I have seen mid-year rate adjustments made during times of drought, the time like we have a water season, a wet season, a rainy season in California. So we could certainly provide updates to council throughout the year, like by February, March, April, we start to have a good understanding of what kind of year we've had and what we're going to have, and it would give us a better sense of where we are, and we could provide an update. I'm not sure if that's 100% what you're asking for, but, and if necessary, if the, if the, if it was exigent circumstances, we could work with the city attorney's office to understand what our options were within, with regard to mid-year rate adjustments, and I'll ask city attorney Burke to comment on that.
My only caveat or caution would be that any rate increase would be subject to the Prop 218 process, which is going to require a rate study, which is going to require a, you know, extensive public hearing notice, and so it's not necessarily a quick pivot or fix.
And it's a cost to the department?
Yeah, if I can add.
And to the ratepayers.
To, one of the reasons why we have like the ratios that you see with regard to just not only the, you know, our bond covenant requires to have a certain amount of revenue over our debt service, we also have internal requirements and policies on how many days on hand of available money in the bank to cover expenses in the event of years like that. So it's built into the system to be robust, and I think that's partly why it's so important that we do pay really close attention to the finances of it. This is a system that is absolutely imperative for the public health and safety of the community, and by that nature, we do run it with a very risk-free tolerance, which by definition is a more expensive system, I'll acknowledge that, but the, the risk on the other side is so great that I think that it is the correct and appropriate way to manage the system. But we do have monies on hand to cover emergency situations where we didn't, weren't receiving the revenues, but that's built into the models that we have.
Could you describe the eliminate non-emergency after-hours responses? Like what, if we move ahead with what we have here, what does that look like? Like what kinds of responses?
Vice Mayor, one of the easiest examples of that would be is somebody, A, just moved into the city, had their water turned off due to delinquent water payment, and they came in at the end of the day, say it's a Thursday at 4:45, 10 minutes to 5:00, 5 minutes to 5:00, they make their payment. Currently, we would dispatch somebody out, they would be on a couple hours of overtime minimum to go out to turn that water on. There is a small charge for after-hours, but it doesn't cover all the hard costs. That's a typical example. Instead of coming out on overtime, we would then actually turn the water on at 7:00 in the morning, the next morning, Friday morning. So they'd have to wait overnight essentially with no water service.
Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you. I just, a couple things. I know we've talked before about the water department, and if you've mentioned it today, I'm sorry, but about there's a large budget surplus for projects in the queue in that city in there, and I think that's what kind of generated this. Is there a timeline, or do you, Mr. Mayo, see accelerating some, expending some of that money?
So we, we're coming to council in December for the downtown water and sewer pipeline replacement. That's going to be probably late spring. I can let Mabel speak to that. She probably has the timeline styled a little bit better than I, and same with the Mission Basin. So I'll let Mabel answer those.
Right, and I guess that will expend a lot of money that's in that.
Yes, absolutely. These are, these are very expensive projects.
Correct. Actually, you will hear after this public hearing, there's another item for the downtown water and sewer project. So that one is, has already gone out to bid. That's to replace our water and sewer pipelines in downtown, as well as an extension of a one-mile-long recycled water line. So you'll see that on December 17th, as well as the progressive design build project. It will kick off just purchasing of the materials so that we could initiate the sewer project components, which will start the decommissioning, so that we can eventually decommission the La Salina wastewater treatment plant. So that one, the entire project, when the entire project goes out to bid, which is for this fiscal year, will be over $100 million. Just the materials that will come first, we're shooting for December 17th council meeting. And then we have already projects that are in construction that are slated to either already awarded and in construction or will go to council this fiscal year to start, and that total in construction, just construction alone, is $58 million. And that total in construction, just construction alone, is $58 million.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So we're, we're going to get ready to vote. I just want to say that it's, it's not cutting close, it's actually cutting into the bone, is what we're doing. And the last time we cut into the bone had more to do with the recession, and we ended up having to cut a lot of services. This ends up coming back to cost even more. And that's my concern too, is if we're not 100% present and doing everything per what is required, then something is going to happen. And it's unfortunate, but that's what usually happens. So I, we end up having mistakes, or not really mistakes, but accidents. It will cost us more. And it will, in order to get back to just what we're doing now, it'll cost us more in the, in the long run. But Councilmember Weiss?
Just one last question. The $100 million rough estimate that Mabel just talked about, is all that money going to be expended by June 30th of 2026?
That's a very good question. No, it will not all be expended by June 30th. The $30 million for the material procurement, roughly, we're still working out those numbers that will, as anticipated come December 17th, that will be when the materials arrive and will, we're looking to pay that. So the project itself will be over a course of three years for the pipeline and the lift station construction.
Okay, thank you. So we'll still have with the $30 million, we'll have almost $200 million in reserves. So, thank you.
And Councilmember Weiss, I just want to add, that $58 million is also assuming those construction costs are spread out within, like downtown water and sewer is going to be two and a half year construction cost. So that $58 million is going to be this fiscal year.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second, please vote.
Sanchez, Robinson, no.
Thank you. Item number 19. Staff recommends that the Community Development Commission adopt a resolution approving development plan, tentative parcel map, conditional use permit, and regular coastal permit to allow for the construction of four townhome units between two, three-story structures at 215 South Meyer Street. I want to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures, my apologies. Did I do the disclosures? Yeah, I did. Disclosures of commissioners regarding constituent contacts and our correspondence.
Staff only.
Excuse me, staff?
No contact.
City manager only. Staff.
Mr. Secretary, do we have any correspondence and/or petitions?
We have not received any correspondence or petition on this item.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and begin with a presentation by Dane Thompson, Associate Planner for the City of Oceanside. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. Dane Thompson with the Planning Division, presenting the 215 South Meyer's Beach Homes project. Staff is recommending that the Community Development Commission adopt a resolution approving the project. The project site is a 5,000-square-foot lot that's currently being used as a parking lot, a gravel parking lot in the downside neighborhood. Site has a general plan land use designation of downtown, a local coastal program land use designation, identity residential, and a zoning designation of downtown Sub District 5. The project site is also in the appealable jurisdiction of the coastal. The project is proposing four three-story townhomes proposed between two duplex structures. Each unit would be comprised of three bedrooms and three and a half bathrooms, and would come out to around 2,000 square feet. Each unit would have one parking space accessed by way of the alley in the rear, and each unit would come equipped with its own private balcony and private rooftop deck. The project is consistent with the general plan and its multiple policies regarding smart growth, infill, and transit-oriented development. Project is also attractively designed and would be compatible with the existing area. Potential privacy impacts from the proposed rooftop decks would be avoided due to the lack of private yards in the air. The project is consistent with the local coastal program in that it is compatible with the neighborhood in terms of height, scale, color, and form, and it would not impact public views or impair coastal access. The local coastal program land use plan allows densities up to 43 dwelling units an acre, would be five units on the site. As proposed, the project only four units. The project complies with the zoning ordinance and the development standards of Sub District B5, with the exception of parking. However, they are utilizing a state law that we call AV 2097, which preempts the city from imposing a minimum parking requirement. Project is consistent with the adopted downtown residential design guidelines and its provisions for site design, site layout, access, height, massing, scale, and architecture. The project will respect existing setback patterns of the area and is proposed at a scale similar to projects in the vicinity. The project is eligible for a Class 32 infill categorical exemption through the SEQA guidelines because it's consistent with those four criteria as shown on the script. Project has complied with the city's enhanced notification policy. They held a community outreach meeting on-site on June 15th, to which four property owners attended, all were supportive of the project. To date, no public correspondence has been received with staff. And on August 20th, the Downtown Advisory Committee voted unanimously to recommend CDC approval of the project. They did not voice any concerns with the project. That concludes my presentation. Staff will be recommending support for the project as proposed. The applicant is here in the audience. They will be available for questions if you have any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant does get up to 20 minutes to present.
They do not have a presentation, but they're available for a question.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so this is the time for the public to address this project. Do we, did we have anyone sign up?
We did not.
Okay. So if you wish to address the council on this project, please approach the podium, state your name, and you have up to three minutes to speak.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lane. This project and other similar projects in the city are lacking one thing, and that is that we're not invigoring the city in the future. And then what we do is that we're piecemealing our projection of traffic. So what happens is that we're saying, it doesn't impact traffic. It doesn't impact the load in the area. We need to take the city and look at it, at its projected future, and put it in the number of years. And then take with everybody in this city here, seeing what the load would be, then do the traffic analysis that would be fair and adjusted within that timeframe. Because that is what would be fair and adjusted for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council on this project?
Hello, my name is Dee Dunham. I'm just, I've come, I'm coming back again because I, I agree that we're piecemealing and we're really adding a lot of density to the beach area, and I believe that it's going to impact traffic, which is already high. And also, I don't think that we, like, I, we, my husband and I, we always compare what Carlsbad is doing versus what we're doing. And we're, we're not really looking at a holistic plan. I feel like we're just, apartments are just popping up, or condos, or homes are just popping up, and it's always densely packed at the beach area. And it's taken away from the environment where now we have a lot of paid parking. It's, it's not an ideal place to visit. I mean, we're having some really neat restaurants that are coming up, but with all these dense apartments that are, you know, the quality of the experience of Oceanside is not really being enjoyed. And I really, I really dislike the fact that we're doing so much dis, dense housing placement close to the beach.
All right.
And I wish that the council would consider that, please.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council on this project? Seeing no one else rising, I'm going to go ahead and close this part of the public hearing. And actually, this is not a density bonus project. This is actually less than what, it can go up to five, and this is four, units. Mr. Thompson, can you explain?
Certainly, Honorable Mayor.
Address the concerns.
So this project is a 5,000-square-foot, has a 5,000-square-foot project site, which the zoning district allows one unit per 1,000 square feet of lot area, so they can get up to five units. This is not a density bonus project. If they wanted to do density bonus, they could get up to, say, 10 units.
Right. So this is actually within what we used to think of as normal. Yeah, that's, that's a nod, okay. All right. And we are actually having our update to the general plan, has been looking at the circulation and traffic and other things. Mr. Borrego, could you address that?
Yeah, there's, there's actually a couple of things at play here. So first of all, as the city council knows, we are in the final stages of updating the city's general plan, and as part of that, we are looking at the cumulative impacts of all the projected growth. So we will be taking a look at traffic impacts on a cumulative basis. And in addition to that, as council may remember, we recently got direction to come back to the city council with the workshop specific to the downtown area, and we'll be doing that in short order. I think we have a date that we'll be sharing with council very shortly. And certainly as to the extent this project is within the downtown area, these areas of the city would also be addressed to that conversation as well. And so we'll have an opportunity to think about that, and if there's any adjustments to the plan for that area, that would be the opportunity to have that conversation.
Thank you. So I'll go ahead and adopt, move to adopt the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Deputy Mayor Joyce?
I've heard a lot of concern about our new builds being turned into short-term rentals. Is this property able to be turned into short-term rentals after it's built, or is this going to be homes for people in our city?
This is, this is east of Coast Highway, so no vacation rentals unless it's hosted?
This site is actually west of Coast Highway.
Oh, that's right.
But there is a condition of approval in the resolution that would prohibit all short-term rentals.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
All right. Item number 20. Staff recommends that the city council and Community Development Commission adopt a resolution confirming issuance of a categorical exemption pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, that SEQA guidelines, Sections 15302, replacement and reconstruction, and 15303, new construction or conversion of small structures, and approving a regular coastal permit, allowing upgrades to the city's existing water and sewer infrastructure within portions of the downtown district and coastal areas, including 13,500 feet of water improvements and 16,800 feet of sewer improvements, and expand the city's recycled water system by installing 5,580 feet of new recycled water infrastructure within the downtown district and coastal areas. We go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and our correspondence.
Staff only.
Staff.
No contact.
None. Staff.
Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
We have not received any correspondence or petition on this item.
All right, we're going to go ahead and get a presentation by Shannon Vitale, Senior Planner for the City of Oceanside. Ms. Vitale?
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez, City Council. Shannon Vitale, Principal Planner in the Development Services Department. I'm here tonight to discuss Agenda Item Number 20, a regular coastal permit to allow Phase 2 of the city's downtown water and sewer infrastructure project. Staff is recommending that the city council and CDC confirm issuance of a categorical exemption pursuant to SEQA and approve a regular coastal permit to allow the proposed Hydraulic modeling performed for the city's, city's water master plan indicated that there are deficiencies in portions of the downtown and coastal areas, and that pipelines need to be upsized in order to improve the hydraulic capacity and accommodate proper water flows. Opportunities to expand the city's recycled water infrastructure were also identified in this plan. A capital improvement program project was initiated to correct these deficiencies, and on June 20th of 2018, the city council approved a professional services agreement for the design of the city's downtown water and sewer replacement program. The program consists of five phases. Phase 1 of the program was completed in December of 2018. The project before you tonight is Phase 2 of that program. Proposed project would bring water utility and sewer infrastructure up to current standards and is designed to accommodate the existing and projected development in the downtown coastal area. The proposed project is subject to a regular coastal permit because it includes work in the city's appealable area of the coastal zone. It includes 13,500 feet of water utility improvements, which are shown in blue on this slide, 16,800 feet of sewer improvements, which are shown in green, an installation of 5,580 feet of a new recycled water. The construction for the project is anticipated to begin in January of 2026 and is expected to last for up to two and a half years. Due to potential impacts to people accessing the beach during busy summer months, there would be no construction, construction activities west of Meyer Street between Memorial Day and Labor Day. Access to residential and commercial businesses would be maintained throughout the project through approved traffic control plans. Night work would be required to minimize traffic impacts at busy times. The Water Utilities Department will coordinate with Main Street Oceanside to avoid impacts to scheduled events such as the weekly farmer's market and sunset market. Presentations were made to Visit Oceanside as well as the OCNA to inform them of upcoming project, and ongoing coordination will occur with these organizations during the entire On August 25th of this year, the project was brought before the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission recommended unanimous approval of the project. Therefore, staff is recommending that the city council and CDC confirm issuance of a categorical exemption pursuant to SEQA and approve regular coastal permit, RRP 253, for Phase 2 of the downtown water utility and sewer infrastructure project. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. We also have Water Utility staff, should you have questions for them.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. This is a time to hear from the public. You do not have to have signed up. Did we have anyone sign up? No, okay. So if you wish to address the council on this item, please approach the podium, state your name, and you have up to three minutes.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lane. Just a couple of questions. Who will benefit from this, these improvements? Will it be existing Oceanside residents or visitors? Or will it be the new developments? And who should bear these costs? If it's visitors, shouldn't there be some form of levy on the visitors and not on our homeowners and not on our businesses? If it's on to new developments, shouldn't it be on them and not- If it's on to new developments, shouldn't it be on them and not on existing homeowners and businesses? If it's for everybody, okay. But if it isn't, and you have just a small amount that is only, you know, benefiting existing homeowners and the existing benefits, existing businesses, then that brings up a lot of questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knott. Anyone else wishing to address the council on this item? I don't see anyone rising, so I'm going to go ahead and close this part of the public hearing. And actually, Mr. Knott, very good question, because this is benefiting existing users, right? Because they're being replaced. When they get old, you have a certain age, I should say, then you do have a tendency to have leaks. However, if we do anticipate areas to be targeted for density bonus projects, Mr. Borrego, is there a way of charging what should be because of the density? It's a higher, much higher burden on the system. Are we able to come up with a plan to make sure that those who are going to be using, making that kind of impact, actually pay for the, for the cost of that larger impact?
Honorable Mayor and council members, well, any, any sort of impact fee that's charged to the city has to be justified through study. So, I think that's an important point, and there would need to be a clear nexus between the impacts associated with that density and what we would want to charge them through some sort of a structured fee program. So, I would probably, if, if there is further questions on this, probably defer to water utility staff as well to be able to kind of discuss where the source of the funding is coming from here. We obviously do have development impact fees in place, as the city council is aware. I'm not sure specifically what pot of money is being used for this project. But in general, yes, I mean, you can always charge an impact fee, but the fact is it has to be justified through a study for Prop 218.
Well, when we came up with those impact fees and plans, we did not, we did not have the benefit of knowing that we were going to be having state laws override local laws in terms of our general plans, in terms of providing for the future and for the future uses of current residents and future residents. So, Mabel, do you have, can you answer that?
I, I can. Honorable Mayor Sanchez and I, council members, thank you so much. That's a very good question. These density bonuses do present a challenge to the city's infrastructure. Typically, what happens is the capacity buy-in fees that you speak of, we do a study what it costs to, for these future development projects, and how we can upsize those facilities when those development needs occur, because it isn't something that can happen immediately, right? When it comes to a sewer, just because someone has a higher density, you're not just replacing that one pipe, you're replacing, you know, a portion of the system, downstream facilities. So, the way we address it is that, right now, the master plan is based off of the general plan. I know the city is going, you know, has done a general plan update, and that includes these increase in densities. What we are going to do is we have an RFP for the master plan that we will be posting later this month or early next month, and that needs to address some sort of assumption for these density bonuses. You know, not everybody or the entire area would maybe 100% build out. We need to make those assumptions and see how that will impact our water utilities.
Thank you. So, that was something that you were contemplating, then?
Yes.
The extra demand for services?
We do. We have to do that with the master plan, and then depending on what facilities will need to be upsized based on those increase in densities, and then that'll determine what those additional costs. And if the general plan update, that's what's approved, then, you know, we'll, we'll have to make that determination and see where we need to upsize facilities.
Thank you. Councilmember Figueroa?
Thank you, Mayor. Few questions. So, how would this work? We have some projects that are coming to Seagate and Cleveland, or proposed projects near Seagate, Cleveland, at the OTC, and also on Peer View, along with the Regal project that was already approved. I guess my question, one, is a construction question. With those developments coming, has staff already looked at the, the potential project scheduling of those with also the construction that's going to take place with the projects that have already been approved?
Yes, that's a very good question. We did do an update to our 2015 master plan with some of the planned downtown redevelopment projects. And when we look at the upsides of our downtown pipelines, we were not just looking at the existing water demands and sewer flow rates for existing, we were also looking at ultimate conditions. At that time, the water conservation measures were probably not as robust as they are now. So, we are seeing a decrease to our wastewater treatment plants and our water usage as well. So, there's some decrease which provides some buffer for increased development. But, you know, how much of a buffer, we won't know until we, you know, do the master plan. But for the pipelines that we're putting in now, it is based off of the ultimate condition for, from our 2015 master plan. And at that time, the water and sewer flows were probably projected higher than what they are actually now.
And what about construction when it comes to, like, traffic flow? And folks are trying to come down Peer View or Mission, and there's construction happening for this project, but then there's also construction happening for the proposed or the ones already passed development projects?
So, we did notify, when we packaged the, the project, that there's other projects and construction, and we would have, the contractor would be made aware of it and be, will need to work around them in addition to all of the other events and constraints in working in the downtown area.
And in regards to these developments helping to cover some of these costs, I mean, it seems like this should have came a year ago or a while ago before all the projects started coming to council, because retroactively, we can't apply this to the projects that have already been passed, correct?
Well, there, there are currently buy-in fees in place, and, you know, the extent to which the existing buy-in fees cover those costs, you know, I can't speak to that, maybe Mabel can, but, you know, it's not like they're getting a complete pass, they are paying buy-in fees.
Okay. And then, when it comes to development impact fees, I know that it can't go to existing projects, but can it go to the recycled water new install? Is that something that would qualify, where development impact fees can actually help cover that cost?
We already have a recycled water impact fee, so if you're doing construction and there isn't, you know, a recycled water system for you to connect to, then that developer does pay for that impact fee for us to use that money to expand our recycled water system. Your question as far as collecting the buy-in fees for the developments that are occurring now, we do look at the development, what was planned in the current general plan, and if their water usage or their sewer is above that, then they pay on top of what their capacity buy-in fee is. And so, we collect, so they are, you know, if they are more dense than, and having more than what we projected or planned for that development, they are paying that additional cost.
And that applies to commercial as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And those are the kind of fees that are not waivable, right?
Correct. I think we do some sort of, yeah, we work it out with the developer, some sort of fair share. Sometimes it's a percentage of what, like, the flow capacity is.
Thank you. Councilmember Robinson?
I don't want to be redundant, but I think Councilmember Figueroa asked a question. I'm not sure the, the answer he was looking for, well, at least I didn't hear it, is when you do these big projects, and we have all these other building projects in the queue, you said something about kind of working around them, but do we not try to coordinate so we only tear the road up one time? Is that, that's kind of what I'm, that's what I was trying to get out of it, is do we try to schedule things so, because I've seen it in other parts of the city where somebody's building something, and then they fix the road, it goes back, and then six weeks later, there's somebody else tearing it up, and then, you know, two months later, there's another project. Is there any way that we, especially on our main roads, do we try to do that?
That's, thank you, Councilmember Robinson. We do, in fact, am working with the Development Services Department. I believe Kimberly Forbin is the project manager for our roads. So, I submitted to her our five-year projection of projects that are in major roadways, for instance, Oceanside Boulevard, Mesa, Garrison Street. Those are the roadways heavily impacted by the sewer centralization project. So, she's aware of that, and, you know, there is a moratorium that the city has if you impact a road within, you know, a recent improvement that the city has done. But by coordinating with our project manager and the roadway improvements, this is avoiding, like, impacts to our residents so that we're not impacting them twice. As far as developers, we do have three developments that are along, like, the sewer centralization project. I believe we'll do our best to work with developers, but sometime, you know, we try to do our best to coordinate with the future development so that we don't impact them, but, you know, yeah, we, sometimes when you delay our contractor a little bit too much, then it ends up costing the, the city, and the developer's schedule is a little bit different. It's out of our control. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Joyce?
I just, another couple of things. You talked about going back a year to come up with these. The way the state has gone, we'd have to use a time machine because they lock in all of the fees, like, when they put the 330 in. So, a lot of these projects have been in the pipeline for much longer than even we could account for. We can't add fees to them afterwards, unfortunately. And also, I'm concerned about the construction, too, about the disruption to folks getting around the downtown area, the folks, especially that live there. I think that is going to be, it's going to be frustrating, but it's so necessary to make sure, again, like we talked about earlier, water is a system that can't fail. We can't fail to deliver water to folks. So, this is a must, must-do. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and move adoption of the resolution. Is there a second?
Yes.
All right. There's a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 21, staff recommends the community development commission adopt a resolution confirming issuance of a categorical exemption pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA guidelines, sections 15303, that's new construction or conversion of small structures, and approving a regular coastal permit to construct a rooftop deck and associated access staircase at 208 South Pacific Street. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing, request disclosures from commissioners regarding constituent contacts and our correspondence.
Staff only.
None.
No contact?
No contact.
None. No.
Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
We do not.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and begin with a presentation by Nicole Weedman, planning, planner two for the city of Oceanside. Ms. Weedman?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Nicole Weedman with the Planning Division, and I will be presenting item number 21. Staff is recommending council adopt a resolution confirming issuance of a categorical exemption and approval of the coastal permit. The project site is located at 208 South Pacific Street and is a 3,270 square foot lot developed with a two-story single-family residence constructed in 1985. The site is situated in the appealable area of the coastal zone, and it has a general plan land use designation of downtown, a local coastal program land use designation of high-density residential, and a zoning designation of downtown sub-district 5A. The proposed project consists of, of the construction of a 739 square foot rooftop deck and associated access staircase. The project conforms to the policies of the local coastal program and therefore the general plan. It would not affect coastal access, impair public views, or remove parking. The project complies with the D5A development standards of the zoning ordinance, and the project also qualifies for the new construction or conversion of small structures categorical The project complied with the city's enhanced notification policy, and the applicant posted notification signage at the site, and notices were mailed out to property owners and tenants. To date, one letter of support has been received. With that, staff recommends council approve the project as proposed. That concludes staff's presentation. I am available for any questions, and the applicant is available as well.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to address the council at this time? You have up to 20 minutes.
He doesn't have a presentation prepared.
Okay. Thank you. This is a time to address the council with respect to this project on 208 South Pacific Street. Did anyone sign up?
No.
Okay, no one signed up. You didn't have to, because this is a public hearing. So, if you wish to address this project, please approach the podium, state your name, and you have up to three minutes to speak. I see no one rising, so I'm going to go ahead and close this part of the public hearing and go to the council. Councilmember Weiss?
Move approval, staff recommendation.
All right, there's a motion, and there's a second, and no other lights. So, there's a motion, second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you very much. All right, we have one more hearing. We're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break and hear our last hearing, or do our last hearing. All right, we're going to go ahead and get started on the last item, and this is item number 22. And this is staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution approving and updated user group classifications and amending the parks and recreation master fee schedule. And before opening the public hearing, I do want, wish to address a suggestion that I may have a conflict of interest in, in this item. And I have, whenever someone suggests that, there's a one person that we are supposed to go to, and that is our city attorney. And our city attorney, Mr. Burke, has met about this, and what is your opinion regarding whether I have a conflict of interest such that I would have to recuse myself?
There's no factual basis on which we would find a conflict of interest which would legally require recusal at this time.
Basically, I would have to have some financial interest in the item.
That's correct. The financial interest code is focused on financial interest and the outcome of the item itself. This is a legislative policy item that is generally applicable.
Right. So, there is no conflict of interest. I actually want to say, before we get started, that I was very, very surprised by that suggestion, and I was actually kind of hurt that that was even suggested, because this is something that I have been, and I will be disclosing on my communications, but I've, I probably spent more time with those who are, have, you know, concerns than I did anybody else. So, I'm going to go ahead then now and open this public hearing and request disclosures and our disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and our correspondence.
Staff and public.
Staff, public, and watched a lot of Park and Rec meetings.
Oh, gosh, where do I start? I've, I've had a relationship with several... I've had a relationship with several of the persons involved, including some of the members of the commission, the Parks and Rec Commission, some of them for decades, actually since I was probably five years old. And most recently, I would say that I have spoken with several people almost around four years ago regarding concerns about access and to resources, parks and rec resources. And I, in fact, suggested appointing some people to the commission to be able to have these kind of discussions at the commission level, and also worked with a couple of the commission, a couple of public members regarding the idea of starting a ad hoc committee to address these concerns. And then even more recently, I have attended meetings, I've discussed these items with commissioners and with staff, and I especially have spent a lot of time discussing with the Godinays as to their concerns, which really focused on past concerns.
Members of our staff, I attended several parks and rec meetings, and I talked to some of the user groups and members of the community at large.
Staff, I'm public. I've also talked to members of the potential user groups. I'm the liaison for the Parks and Recs Commission. Yeah, and so talked happily with the community about this.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
We received a correspondence after the four o'clock cutoff, but that correspondence has been distributed to council.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and begin with a presentation by Mr. Manuel Gonzalez, Parks and Rec Director. Mr. Gonzalez?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council. My name is Manuel Gonzalez. I'm the director of Parks and Recreation, and tonight I'll be presenting on the proposed updates to the Parks and Recreation user group classifications and the master fee schedule. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution approving an updated user group classification and amending the Parks and Recreation master fee schedule. The City of Oceanside Parks and Recreation Department allocates fields, facilities, and courts based on guidelines in our facility rental packet, which includes priority class descriptions that were developed and approved by city council on September 8, 2010. The existing facility rental packet is silent on multiple issues, and in 2022, it was discovered that a local charter high school was incorrectly placed in the same classification as the Oceanside Unified School District. This prompted the formation of a Parks and Recreation Commission ad hoc committee on November 9, 2021, that was tasked with working with the community, including the impacted stakeholders, to evaluate equity in field and facility allocation. The ad hoc committee was subsequently converted into a standing committee on January 10 of 2023 and was working on this issue through September 30 of 2025. The ad hoc standing committee hosted four community workshops between August 29 and November 1 of 2023. The purpose of these meetings was to solicit community feedback that would be used in future efforts to develop the facility rental packet. The facilitators focused on having participants help to develop a vision and values that would serve as a foundation for revising the user group classifications as well as the facility rental packet. On November 14, 2023, the standing committee presented a draft updated user group classification to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and the commission voted to have staff revise the packet as well as the user group classifications based on further public input. The Parks and Recreation Department staff hosted four public meetings between January 11 of 2024 and May 13 of 2024. All user groups were invited to participate, and these meetings were made, were open to the public. The meeting's schedule and the recordings of the meetings were posted on a webpage that was dedicated to this process. There were eight public meetings dedicated to the revision of the facility rental packet and user group classifications, not including subsequent standing committee meetings and Parks and Recreation Commission meetings. The department also collected survey information related to topics that were discussed at each of the department meetings, as well as information that was discussed in the standing committee and commission meetings that was used to refine the field and allocation policy that was presented to the Parks and Recreation Commission on November 12, 2024. This was a very open and public process and broad participation from, and had broad participation from many stakeholders. Subsequently, the city and several community members engaged in a mediation process with representatives from the State of California Civil Rights Department. Significant process, or progress was made during these meetings, but the city and community members could not agree how to prioritize youth groups with less than 70% residents or schools not governed by a joint use agreement. The facility and athletic field allocation policy was last revised on December 4, 2024, based on input from sports user groups and stakeholders. This document is a department instruction that provides details on how the department will allocate fields and facilities based on user group classifications. This document is provided as a reference, and at this time, staff is not requesting approval for the document. In terms of the priorities, the first priority is for city programs that are offered either by city staff or independent contractors that operate on behalf of the city. This includes city programs, clubs, workshops, public meetings, and events offered by city staff or the Parks and Recreation Department, where the department is the host of the registration. Priority two is for programs or events hosted by the Oceanside Unified School District as prescribed by the joint use agreement, and any additional joint use agreement would require council action. Priority three is for Oceanside resident youth groups. These programs are for participants that are 18 years or younger, have a verified minimum residency rate of 70% of City of Oceanside residents, and these groups have nonprofit status, must be organized, operated, and coached by volunteers. Programs in this category are recreational, and every child has an opportunity to play regardless of skill level. Priority four is for Oceanside resident competitive groups. These programs are for participants that are 18 years and younger and have a verified minimum of 70% City of Oceanside residents. These groups must have nonprofit status but can have paid staff and coaches. These programs are competitive, and groups may limit participation to elite athletes without requirements for equitable play. Groups in this category will pay higher fees. Priority five is for schools within Oceanside city limits. This includes charter schools, parochial schools, private schools, and homeschool programs not included in a joint use agreement. They must have a physical location in Oceanside and/or a verified minimum 70% enrollment of City of Oceanside residents. These programs are competitive, and groups may limit participation to elite athletes without requirement for equitable play. These schools pay the same fees as the Oceanside resident competitive teams. Priority six is for recreation youth groups. The difference from priority three is that in this category, the verified minimum for Oceanside residents is from 51 to 69%. So these are mostly Oceanside residents but don't meet the 70% threshold. The groups have a lower priority but pay the same fees as the teams in priority three. Priority seven is for competitive or elite youth groups. The difference from priority four is that groups in this category, again, are mostly comprised of Oceanside residents with a rate of at least 51% residents up to 69%. These groups also pay the same fees as priority four teams. The next section is for senior and adult priority groups. Priority eight is for Oceanside resident seniors or therapeutic groups with nonprofit status. The programs in this event are for participants who are 55 years or older and are free or low-cost or promote physical or mental well-being for seniors. Groups must have nonprofit status and serve a verified minimum of 70% Oceanside residents. Therapeutic groups must also meet these criteria but also have a minimum of 51% of participants living with a disability. Priority nine is for seniors or therapeutic groups without nonprofit status. These groups must meet the same priority as priority eight, except that they only need a minimum verified of 51% City of Oceanside residents and do not need to have nonprofit status. These groups may charge a higher rate that is at market rate. Priority 10 is for Oceanside nonprofit groups. Programs and events in this category must be a minimum 70% City of Oceanside residents and/or have a physical location in Oceanside. These groups must have nonprofit status and be open to Oceanside residents. Groups with higher priorities will be classified here when they are conducting fundraising activities. Priority 11 is for private Oceanside resident groups. These programs or events are hosted by groups for participants of all ages with a verified minimum of 70% City of Oceanside residents and/or private individuals that reside within the City of Oceanside. This includes private parties, weddings, one-off events, and they are first come, first served. Priority 12 is for private non-resident groups. These groups must meet the same criteria as priority 11, except that they either have less than 70% Oceanside residents or do not reside in the city. Priority 13 is for commercial programs or events hosted by for-profit resident or non-resident groups. This is also where we would place any group that does not fit into the previous 12 priorities. If approved, the user group classifications will change the priority class descriptions that were approved by city council on September 8, 2010, thereby requiring some changes to the department master fee schedule. These fee changes are not intended to generate additional revenue. There are several fees that are no longer used and some amenities that need to be added. Once adopted, staff recommends that the fee changes take effect at the beginning of the next fiscal year on July 1 of 2026. First, the department initiated a pilot program on June 22, 2021, to reduce the fees charged for gymnasium rentals to better align with the fees charged by other cities. The department recommends adding these changes to the department master fee schedule, not including these as a permanent part of the fee schedule would double the cost to rent a gymnasium in Oceanside. Aquatic fees were also adjusted to create greater alignment between all of the facilities while adjusting rental rates to align with new user group classifications. Monthly, quarterly, and annual passes will now be valid at all of our aquatic facilities. The hourly staff rate has been adjusted to account for salary increases, and the department proposes to eliminate non-resident fees for drop-in, lap, and recreational swim to streamline the number of fees that we charge. Non-resident rates will be preserved for passes, however, based on recommendations from the Parks and Recreation Commission, the department proposes to increase the non-resident rate from annual, for annual passes so that residents enjoy the same proportional discount for annual passes as they do for quarterly. Staff requests that this fee not be subject to Council Policy 600-05, which stipulates that non-residents will pay a $10 fee surcharge. So the non-resident annual pass will cost 500. We propose that the non-resident annual pass costs $540 instead of 510. The fees for pool parties and water aerobics have been updated to reflect fees currently charged to achieve the required cost recovery. The department proposes to eliminate fees for lifeguard training, emergency response, and water safety instructor classes because these are courses to certify candidates that are recruited for vacant positions in the City of Oceanside, both at our pools and also ultimately at our beaches. Changes in the facility and athletic field fees are proposed to align with the revised priority classifications. The new fees reflect a standardization of spaces across the department and eliminates room configurations that are not currently used. Staff recommends introducing a refund policy for facility rentals, where cancellations that are made more than 60 days in advance receive a 75% refund of the fees paid, and cancellations received less than 60 days, with a less than 60 days' advance notice, will not receive a refund. There are some fees in special events that have been updated to reflect adjustments to cost recovery because the city collects a pass-through fee charged to a third-party vendor. These include insurance and cleaning fees. Staff also recommends capping charges at the band shelf to 10 hours per day. The changes to fees for gyms and athletic fields are primarily to align with changes to the user group classifications, and there was a fee that was added to account for beach volleyball and pickleball court rentals. With that, this concludes my presentation, and I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. This is a time that we get to hear from the public regarding this item. It looks like we did have some people sign up.
Yes, we did.
Is that correct?
We have two organized presentations and eight speakers that registered.
Okay, so go ahead and get started with the 10-minute presentation by the group called Arlene Hammerschmidt, and looks like the three people who are giving up their time for the 10 minutes is Gordon Chavez, Genevieve Wonder, and Marilyn Pomelli Flores. Could you, the three of you stand to be identified? Okay, that's one, two, okay, three, all right, and you have to stay for the entire presentation. Thank you. Ms. Hammerschmidt?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, and thank you for this time, and thank you for your time of listening to everybody. I would just like to state at the beginning that the community members representing the community named by the standing committee chair to the mediation expected our own time to present the classification guide that was developed by that group. This expectation is derived from the very last line in Mr. Borrego's email of 1027, which is, what I did say during our last post-mediation meeting is that our staff would not present your version to the decision-makers, council, as that would best be left to your group's representatives. So we thought we had a 10-minute presentation, at least, that proved not to be the case, It is most unfortunate that the mayor has decided not to follow the ethics code of conduct that she not only signed as elected official but also supported with her vote in 2020. The city attorney stated that, no, there was nothing legal as far as legal definition of conflict of interest. However, the points are, points in the complaint are, oh, good. Failing to maintain the honor and independence of committees, failure to avoid even the appearance of impropriety by not correcting her introduction as Mayor Esther Sanchez, which automatically puts pressure on the commissioners, and failure to even avoid, avoid even the appearance of impropriety. There was also an intimidation of one particular- There was also an intimidation of one particular commissioner who Mayor Sanchez opened her next comment on the next agenda item as, so close, one more vote, while literally staring at the commissioner who made the last vote on the past, the previous item. Also failing to remain impartial. Mayor Sanchez made her position on this council item completely clear during her comments at the September Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, and that is that she is in favor of adopting the city's version of the classification guide. Sorry. It is unfortunate also that the director's staff report is filled with errors and misinformation. I've sent the corrections to some of the council members, and it's almost a maliciously biased, repeatedly incorrect, and frankly sneaky staff report. Note that the report enhances the staff's request and consistently diminishes Parks and Recreation Commission, Parks and Recreation Standing Committee, and community members that the Standing Committee represents. The Parks and Recreation Standing Committee Chair selected community members for the mediation team who represented over 300 years of experience in Oceanside sport culture, from childhood participation to coaching and administering youth and beyond. The full demographics of Oceanside were represented in that community mediation representative team. Yet, staff report consistently devalues and highly, this highly expert group as simply community members, as if we're gathered off the street like trash. Also note that the Parks and Recreation Commission votes denying staff's request, 9 to 0 and 5 for, essentially votes of no confidence, are not mentioned in the staff report. While votes, commissions vote to support the staff's requests are specifically called out. Parks and Recreation Standing Commission Committee also voted 2 to 1 to deny staff's recommendation of approval in 2024. Staff bypassed requesting the Standing Committee's recommendation on the 2025 Classification Guide in disregard of a commission vote recommending that it be taken to Parks and Recreation Standing Committee. The classification guide offered by the department is not what was agreed upon at the end of the facilitated mediation, June 26th. Even though that's what's stated in the staff report, that is an error. There are problems in the policy that tells the staff how to administer the classification That essentially, that administrative direction has the potential to negate what looks like possible equity in the classification guide by making it possible for the department director to administer the classification guide subjectively with favoritism resulting in the loss of equity. There are several loophole opportunities for favoritism. One is the sports council, to which a user group must be a part of in order to get a special priority, but that's not reflected in the classification guide. So if your group doesn't have a representative on the sports council, you basically get what's left, what's left over. The right of first refusal is another issue. Longstanding use is not defined anywhere, therefore leaving it to subjective decision by a Parks and Recreation administrator. This codifies unfair, possibly discriminatory past practices. It's not transparent. It affects the administration of the classification guide, but it's outside the classification guide, it's hidden. The public goes to the classification guide to try to figure out what fees they're going to have to pay, what priority they have. They don't read the whole document. Does a certain academy that has been unjustly awarded priority use of city amenities for years now qualify as a longstanding user? This issue also cements into policy unjust, inequitable past treatment. Apparently, Parks and Recreation Director can change, also in this direction, can change any part of the administrative policy that he or she desires without oversight or accountability. Council does not need to vote on that policy, really? The opportunity for discrimination, inequitable, and unfair permit allocations for Parks and Recreation amenities is glaring and astounding. There are several loopholes to take care of your favorites and slight whomever may not be your favorite. There are three more issues that I'm not even going to try to address. It is, I'll just save you 37 seconds. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is another organized presentation. This is Gordon Chavez. Excuse me, it's Wayne Godinay. Okay, sorry. Group and three people who are giving up their time for this organized presentation is Anthony Flores, Val Torres, and Wilson Godinay. Could the three of you please stand up? One, two.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Although several of the people that were introduced are on the Parks and Rec Commission, they're here as private residents, very, very knowledgeable about sports in Oceanside because the kids play sports or through Save Our Streets and other activities, they participate in all the parks, neighborhoods, addressing gang issues, and the sports culture in the City of Oceanside. In this short amount of time that we have, just need to fly with some of the things I heard on the previous report, and then kind of took a shot at some of the things we wanted to connect during some of the mediations, which only occurred in June. The two or three mediations that happened after were completely voluntary, got together, tried to figure it out if we could get on the same page with one guide. We didn't, so we felt that there were going to be two presentations tonight, and we found out last minute that there wasn't. Some of our members, like Paul Papow, is out with the OPD right now with the transit issue. Sent a picture of where he is. James Greer, one of our members, medical procedure for his wife tonight. Professor Madeline Lee, Cal State University, busy with school. Raquel Alvarez, school board member, is still on her way, trying to just make it to sit in. We have Arlene, of course, who should be heroes on parade because her ability to look into things and measure it with fairness and what is written, such as the Code of Ethics, it's unbelievable, nothing, you know, but thanks to her. And then Wilson Godinay, my brother, who's the standing committee, the former standing committee chair that was dismissed here, and Pastor Sheldon Brown. Those are eight members of our team that represent many years of the City of Oceanside sports culture, addressing gang issues. These guys are on school campus. There's nobody that I know that knows more collectively than what's going on with them, and maybe people that serve on council member Figaro and a few other people in the community and the neighborhood, as well as some people in the schools. We felt strongly, after meeting and talking and expressing, that the main issue with us is the elephant in the room, and it's Coastal Academy, no problem. Just shook Glenn Hinton's hand right here, have no problem with him. In fact, I'm urging him to join us and to clean this issue up, you know, do the interviews that were requested through Arlene's list and with the investigation and her complaint, finish those up. All five people that were on my list that somehow did not get interviewed by the investigator are still working today. That's where the truth will come out. Do we want the truth? We all do, don't we? Why are we still here a couple years later? You know, so I would say, and believe me, it's incumbent on people who are serving the public, I would say to the deputy mayor, Mr. O'Brien, you're raising children, some of you, you guys are, you know? Set an example. Who knew what when? That's what we're asking. Clean this up. Let's get the truth out about the allocation. Okay, so Coastal got allocated, they worked for two, it went two, three years. Even school board member Raquel Alvarez was calling me. Wayne, do you know where the school is? We're trying to figure out where they are, we're trying to find them. What fields are they using? They're not joint use. He would tell you if she's standing here right now. And so, and we also know through her that now to be approved as a charter by the school district, now it's formal. Somebody from the school district has to have somebody representing the school district on the board meetings for Coastal. I'd be glad to go to Coastal and speak because many of the people here do not know what we know and why we keep coming to city council. We have to know, we have to know who knew what when and rectify from that situation. When it came out on April 27th at the second ad hoc committee meeting chaired by Wilson Godinay Commissioner, Arlene, I mean Genevieve Wonder, and Lisa Russell, the school district, the school district's standing representative, and told Mr. Olson, Parks and Rec Admin, there was no joint use ever with Coastal Academy, there isn't one now, and there won't be. They have their own budget, staff, and personnel, and board. And so, when it was discovered there, everybody was urging Mr. Borrego, city manager, to look into this, to review, check that out, and it never happened, and that was in April. So in October 19th, 2022, we came here to city council. You know, we came here and spoke. Chris Rodriguez, Corey Jensen, the city council, they put it up there. We came to present, we wanted an investigation, we got a 30-day memo. That 30-day memo came out in December. I have a copy. It said that nobody, no team, user group requested a field permit, that didn't get one. Absolutely not true, I can prove it, we have the information, absolutely not true. We didn't make a big stink. We went into January, and that's when the ad hoc became a standing committee, June 10th, 2023, and the complaint was in effect by Ms. Hammerschmidt. And in February, the investigation went February, March, and April. Mr. Gonzalez was hired in February, we met him, you know, and we went on. But the Standing Committee wanted to start their meetings, nobody showed up, they showed up to talk about a webpage in the library community room, nobody addressed the 2010 classification guide, where the only schools listed was the Oceanside Unified School District, joint use agreement. And so, when things were discovered, you had teams like the Warriors and the Monarchs and them that weren't being treated fairly, that came to us, we're advocating for people, and it was supposed to be resolved, and so on and so forth. Well, they are gone, because when people were calling in for permits, they weren't given a permit. Somebody else was in the gym, someone was on the field. And all we were saying to Coastal was, when it was discovered and you had free use for a couple years, that's okay, just go back to the end of the line, and those teams that never got permits are right there. You know, that didn't happen, they started paying. You know, so if you pay, you stay where you are. Well, what happened? Nothing really changed. And Mr. City Manager, you knew that. I think your response back, well, when SOS found out, we stopped. No, they were free, now they started paying, and you told me that since they were nonprofit, and you told me that on the third floor in a meeting that included the mayor, you know, that they didn't have to reimburse the city because they're a nonprofit. Well, then why they started, why? Why they started paying then? They're nonprofit. I put that on our temporary guide in our four workshops that was presented all the way up until November 1st, when I stood right here with a copy of the temporary draft. And somehow, the council member here, Parks and Rec Director, and 100 people from Coastal, a motion was made, made by people and voted by people who had never been to our four workshops, nobody. You know, and so, boom, it goes into the hands of this director for 10 months, he shows up on September 10th, 2024, 9-0 rejection of his entire policy, rental package, and all that. After that 9-0, the Godinay makes a motion to bring it back to the Standing Committee, Arlene, myself, and our team, 9-0 approval. The next meeting, October 8th. We tried our first workshop, all he wanted to do was correct the 19 criticisms from that, well, wait, 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 it's back in the hands of the Standing Committee, you're not in charge. And so, when I heard the report and something about December 4th, it rang a bell, that's a city council night last year. And one of the commissioners who's a part of the user group called me and says, we got a survey, and he wants that survey in by the day after Thanksgiving to be used, you know, to help with his presentation at the city council on December 4th. Keep in mind, 9-0 rejection, again, an attempt on November 12th, right? You know, right after elections, just like this time, the week after, Parks and Rec Commission, it lost again, 5 for, twice rejected, but still was going to go to city council, I made a call to city council member. Went over there on the third floor, and it got taken off the December 4th agenda, city council agenda. Why was that brought up? Nobody knows about it on our end. You know, why speaking so highly of it? You know, what happened on December 4th? There was no council agenda. These are like shenanigans, these are, you know, moves that are made that cause us to think that there's an ethic problem here, there's a transparency and accountability problem. That's all we're saying. We don't begrudge any school, any parent, for their child and their children to be involved. The critical thing I want to say about classification A and why we moved the elephant in the room in all the schools to the A, is we were getting nowhere, nobody, it was one here and not the other. We wanted to create the conversation about what to do with the schools. I even had a mock category for the schools, a sample, that absolutely, through Raquel Alvarez coming back from Texas and sharing the joint use agreement and the schools and facilities that are in there and some that are not, there is schools and amenities and fields for everybody. And our suggestion to a council member maybe a week and a half ago was, let's just get back into the room here and let's schedule everybody, find out what the season, what the time, what the start date, let's do it together so we can come out and be on the same page with each other. This isn't the same page here. We're talking about ethics, we're talking about transparency, fairness, those are values that came up. And the community in your classification guide, in your organization's structure, community, mayor, city council.
Thank you, Mr. Godinay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kellen Su, followed, oh, Jimmy Knott, I'm sorry. They were sliding in, and I, Mr. Knott, followed by Kellen Su, followed by Samantha Martinez, followed by Glenn Hinton.
And no, I'm invisible.
What was that?
I'm invisible.
No, you sit right across from me, you're not invisible.
Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherri Lane, got three points to make. First off, I believe that all of the programs should be affordable and accessible to all. And it should be judged on an individual sliding scale with all sorts of alternative payment types or exchange types, like special projects, like say, if a person can't afford something, and a mural needs to be done, let's incorporate the talents, there's nothing to prohibit that. Second thing is that there was nothing, nothing mentioned, like what Carlsbad does in other cities, equipment, and you have also legacy donations, solicitation, and sponsorships. I didn't hear anything about that, for any of the programs or any of the sponsorship for anyone. And finally, the third thing, health and safety training. CERT, Red Cross, OPD, a lot of community groups, including the public, the other things, need the training for disasters, for safety issues. Like as an example, we have over here the AED, we have also CPR, disaster training, water safety, things that public needs that could be an introduction. be an introduction classes that should be free, that we can seek grants on. I think that might be worth someone's time to save a life. Thank you.
You, Kellen Sue, followed by Samantha Martinez.
Good evening, city council. My name is Kellen Sue. I have four young children who are heavy users of the Oceanside parks, playgrounds and fields. For the last three and a half years, the user guide has been worked on after hearing from the community that the previous guide was not specific enough and allowed for inconsistencies. The process has been rigorous and long, inviting user groups to share their experiences and needs. The process has also been very contentious at times, especially concerning who should author this document, more so than the contents or where charter schools should fall. The Parks and Rec Commission was unable to recommend this document because some commissioners wanted charter schools moved up higher, others wanted to continue debating despite over three and a half years to create a singular document. It was not solely because there was a lack of support for this document. I believe that the best document, the fairest, most transparent document is the document that had the most user groups input and the most public outreach. Director Gonzalez presented that document to the Parks and Rec Commission over a year ago. And then that document was taken into closed-door meetings and changed by a very small group of residents who represent only one user group. And to be fair, I'm not even sure who was in those because it was closed door. Putting charter schools equal to OUSD as proposed by some community members could put our joint use agreement at risk means losing fields that we have so desperately needed and have just recently in the last several years gotten back access to. This has taken years and years and has been a huge toll on the user groups, on coaches, on athletic directors, on, on many different people. And there have been so many attempts to collaborate. I actually would consider the original document that was made by the community and should have been presented a year ago before it went into the shadows. Thank you.
Thank you. Samantha Martinez, followed by Glenn Hinton.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and council members. My name is Samantha Martinez and I'm the principal of Coastal Academy High School. I'm honored to be here this evening to share more about the impact that Coastal Academy High School is making in Oceanside. Our school opened in 2017 and has grown to serve more than 800 students who live, work and contribute to this community. This year, we completed a $27 million investment in the city of Oceanside by completing our new high school campus off of Oceanside Boulevard. This project revitalized a previously underutilized area, cleaned up the surrounding neighborhood and brought new life and foot traffic to local businesses. Our students and our families support Oceanside restaurants, coffee shops and stores daily. Many of our students rely on public transportation, which connects seamlessly with the city's services and infrastructure. Coastal Academy High School students volunteer locally, participate in internships with Oceanside businesses and represent the city with pride through athletics, arts and service. I would like to thank the council members who have visited or toured our campus this past year, including Mayor Sanchez, Director of Parks and Rec Gonzalez, Deputy Mayor Manager O'Brien, Deputy Mayor Keim, City Manager Borrego and council members for Garoa, Joyce, Weiss and Robinson, as well as Parks and Recreation Chair Russell. We're proud to partner with the city of Oceanside in creating opportunities for young people to grow, learn and lead. As you consider the user group classifications tonight, I respectfully recommend adjusting Coastal Academy's position from number five to number four, ensuring equal access for all Oceanside public school students. Together, we can ensure all students can thrive as teammates and future leaders of our great Oceanside city. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Hinton, followed by Shelley Hugh.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Glenn Hinton. I'm an Oceanside resident, District 2, retired Marine, and I'm also the Athletic Director at Coastal Academy High School. I've been involved since the beginning, when this kind of the whole issue came up. I've been to all of the workshops, Parks Commission meetings and been trying to do whatever we can to try to protect our student athletes and their access to the city of Oceanside resources. As Principal has said, we want to be partners in this community. We've always said that we wanted to be partners in this community. We have the new campus right off of Oceanside Boulevard and we're going to be here for the long haul. We're going to continue to grow and we want to continue to be partners with the city. One of the things that we've always done with our use of the city resources, we try to make them better, not only for our athletes and our teams, but also for all the other users, all the other user groups within the city that uses resources to make them better for, for everyone. We've donated uniforms and equipment to local recreational sports teams. You'll see some of our parents out there filling in the gopher holes, picking up trash. Also, you know, when the baseball field rains, I'm also the baseball coach out there pumping off the, the rainwater off the field so we can get the fields back in shape for not only our student athletes to use, but also for, for others. During the, the workshops and the guides, Mr. Gonzalez and his staff, I think, did a tremendous job. They brought in all of the, the key user groups. Everything was open. We had fair and honest discussions. And quite frankly, I think bringing everybody together, all the user groups, we came together and kind of gelled. And it wasn't us versus them. It was a group of people that came together to try to make things better for everyone. So again, I'd like to reiterate that we want to continue to be partners for the city, with the city of Oceanside. We'd like to continue to have access to city of Oceanside parks resources. Within the, the facility guides itself, we generally recommend that the, the city council approve this, as my principal just stated. It would be nice, and I think there's an argument that can be made that a public charter school with, that is domiciled within the city of Oceanside with over 63% students from the city of Oceanside, that you can move us up in front of a, a travel team or a competitive youth group. But again, I thank you very much for this and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Shelley Hugh, followed by Mario Cornejo.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, council members. My name is Shelley Huff. My son and I are both born and raised here in Oceanside. This is our home. Oceanside isn't just where we live, it's part of who we are. Oceanside's fields, gyms and parks have always been a heart of our community and that's where our children learn to teamwork, confidence and pride in their city. I am both a parent and a coach at Coastal Academy. I see firsthand how vital the access to city facilities are for our students. My son plays volleyball at Coastal. We regularly rely on Melba Bishop and Junior Seau specifically for volleyball for practices and games because as you know, we do not have our own fields or gym. For our students, these facilities are not a luxury, they are a lifeline. Limiting our direct ability to, to use them and the, to train and compete and belong, sorry. Limiting access would directly affect their ability to train, compete and belong to something larger than themselves. I'm late to the party. I've only started coaching last spring. I realize there are some contentious issues in the past, but this is about our students. These are Oceanside, Oceanside families. While in theory, we support the current version of the user classification guide, we would respectfully request adjusting Coastal Academy's position from number five to number four to ensure equal access for all Oceanside students regardless of their school status and school name. We do not want to go down on the list as that would place our students below the competitive travel teams for access to city facilities, something that wouldn't be right for our Oceanside students. Our children play an important part of our society. They are our future, our investments and our legacy. Let's make the choices today to reflect that truth by putting the students' needs first. Thank you.
Thank you. Mario Cornejo, followed by Amy Cornejo.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and council members. My name is Mario Cornejo. I live in the city of Oceanside. I'm a Marine Corps veteran. I would like to thank the council for providing safe and accessible facilities for, for all of our students. My son plays football for Coastal Academy and regularly uses the facilities throughout Oceanside due to the fact that we do not have these facilities that are full. I'm grateful that he's able to participate and be part of a program that not only teaches him about sports, but also teaches him, you know, life lessons like accountability, discipline, working together to accomplish a goal. I see the positive impact that it's had on my son and other kids, how important it is for these programs to be, to be available. I don't coach my son in football. I do coach young athletes. I'm a wrestling coach. I seen firsthand struggling, insecure students grow into confident young adults. Limiting access to these facilities that allow these students to be part of these programs, in my opinion, would significantly impact students in a, in a negative way. I feel strongly that it is our responsibilities, coaches and leaders, to do everything we can to support, provide resources to encourage our next generation to be strong pillars of our community, especially young adults in our community. Not to limit or remove resources that are not going to help them achieve this. We ask the council to support the current version of the guide, but respectfully recommend adjusting Coastal Academy's position from number five to number four, ensuring equal access for all Oceanside residents regardless of school status. Thank you again for your consideration and your continued partnership in supporting our children's growth and opportunity.
Thank you. Amy Cornejo.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and council members. My name is Amy Cornejo and my husband and I have lived in Oceanside for 10 years. And so thank you guys so much for your ongoing support, providing safe and thank you, and accessible facilities for all of our students in Oceanside. This is my eighth year and my husband's eighth year as a parent at Coastal Academy High School and I'm also a coach for eight years. And like my husband said, his son plays football, he uses the facilities regularly. And so obviously limiting his access to these facilities and his friends, that's going to, you know, impact his ability to practice, play and looking forward to his playing time in college is his future. So just respectfully recommend adjusting Coastal Academy's position from number five to number four, like you've been hearing, so that we have equal access for all Oceanside residents. And we really create a difference for public education versus private education and this elite travel teams. Thank you again for listening and for your continued partnership in supporting all students' growth and opportunities. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Raquel Alvarez. Okay, this is a public hearing. If you wish to address the council on this item, you do not have to have signed up. If you wish to address this, please approach the podium, state your name and you can speak for up to three minutes. I see no one else rising, so I'm going to go ahead and close this public, this part of the public hearing. I, I would like to correct something here. I did speak at the Parks and Rec Commission meeting. I did not state my preference as to the three. What I did say is, I please make a decision and that was it. So I did not state a preference. I, I am hearing some other information tonight that includes perhaps supporting the, I guess, the second document that, that was produced by staff with the adjustment of between four and, but, request by Coastal Academy to adjust it from five to four. What would that do, Mr. Gonzalez?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor. I'm not sure I understand the question. The...
Yeah, they're asking, they've been asking to adjust the, the staff's recommendation with respect to charter schools to go from current level five to, to four.
So the implication would be that groups that have 70% or more residents would fall below. It's, it's not just Coastal as a, as a charter school, but parochial schools, private schools, homeschools that are below that threshold of residency rate. And, and we're talking a baseline of 70%. Some of these groups have as many as 90%.
Right. Okay. So it would, it would, there's a lot more that's, that's involved.
Correct. And, and the way that we're, the way that we're allocating fields is, is reflective of, of that relationship or, or that, that order.
Last question. Have you been able to accommodate everyone this past year?
There were a couple of groups that did not want the fields that we offered them and, and chose not to, not to pull a permit. But for the vast majority, our staff is able to work with them and it may not be the day or the time that they want, but we find a field for them.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. And not to, it's not the even the elephant, it's just a zebra in the room. I, I just want to say on the ethics thing, and you answered your questions and I'm not doubt, but I think it's a good lesson for all of us to, unless you intend to speak as the mayor, you, you could have, I think, said, I'm speaking as an individual or as myself. And I know they even introduced you as the mayor. They called you, I saw that. And then that's not how you signed up. I, I think perception's reality and I just think it's a good reminder for all of us when we're speaking as individuals.
And if I could address that, this is actually...
As long as my time doesn't run.
Okay, if you could stop his, yeah. Cause I, I want to make sure that this is very, very clear. I have been the liaison and I did the same thing, right? We have had council members speak before. It has never been a problem. There was one time that I did ask, when a council member spoke before the planning commission, and I did ask if that was, if there were, if there were any rules that were broken on that. And the response was no. It was no. And that person did represent themselves as a council member. So I don't think anyone in that room knew or didn't know that I was, that I'm, you know, on the council or that I'm the mayor. But it, it was not, is not a conflict of interest because I did not even say a preference. But anyway, I just wanted to...
Yeah, I'm not saying it was a conflict. And I, I read the attorney's thing. I agree with him. I respect him. I'm just saying sometimes the thumb's a little heavier when the title...
And it wasn't, it wasn't an ethics violation either.
I didn't say it was. Okay. You, you do what you want with it.
Okay.
Okay. Back on the clock for our staff. Couple of questions and then some comments. So I think Ms. Hammerstein brought up one thing about a definition, about longstanding use. We, and I was looking, I didn't see a defin, how do we define or determine longstanding use?
These are groups have, have been allocated certain fields for a number of actually years. So for example, we have four little leagues that we accommodate that have, some of them been at their sites for, for decades. We have groups like Pop Warner that have been at Martin Luther King for many years. So the idea is that these groups have a longstanding place at a particular site, that they continue to have access to that particular location.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just suggesting that maybe in the definitions, you come up with a way to, is it three, you know, a group that has been three years continuous without a break or something so that there's no arbitrary use? Oh, you're longstanding, you're not. I get, my kids played Little League, the same ones that are playing today. So I, I understand it in concept. I just think her point about definition is, is reasonable. Let's see. I, I read the thing about sports council is, can you clarify for me? Is there a sports council being developed or what was that about?
Yeah, so the intent is to have a sports council to bring all of the groups together. One of the things that came up in our meetings was that there was a need for us to have two-way conversations between our, our user groups and the department, our staff, to talk about the maintenance needs, to talk about capacity needs, a variety of different issues. So the intent is to form a sports council at some point, but it is not an exclusive group by any stretch of the imagination. And the idea is for any group that wants to be a member to, to be able to join that group.
Okay, is that something that would, it's not the same as another commission or something like that, is it?
It, it is not. It is strictly a voluntary group that, that comes together. It is strictly a voluntary group that, that comes together to discuss issues with the department.
All right. I have a question on the fee schedule and I'm just kind of curious on the, for the pool. There's an annual pass thing and I understand the correction and, and all that and the $10 thing. But a quarterly pass is $125. An annual pass, which is four quarters, is $500. Was there any thought given to, to try and entice people to get an annual pass to maybe a little bonus in the, you know, a little lesser price or something? So, people are signing up for annual or does that not seem to matter? Because it, it seems like a moot thing to have a, even an annual fee.
The intent at this point was to not generate any additional fees or lower fees. We would want to do a, a fee study and, and benchmark our fees to other organizations before we did something like that. But, but the intent is moving forward to really look at how our fees are, are structured. So, we would definitely take a look at that particular relationship between quarterly and annual passes.
Okay. And on the, eliminate the fees for the training and emergency funds, how are those classes funded if there's no fees?
It, it's based out of our general fund operating budget. So, they, they don't recover the cost, the, the fees that we charge do not recover the cost of offering those classes. And the reality is the, the lost revenue from not having staffing to run programs is more significant than what we will not be charging for these courses.
Okay, I had another question and, but I'm running out of time and I want to get to some comments, so. Okay, and the, and the comment already came up about, the, the mayor brought it up about moving coastal. So, that's all the questions I have, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna make some comment. In the eight years that I've been employed in one way or the other, as an elected or as an employee of the city, a resident for 37 years, to be honest with you, I have not seen so much contention between a, the group, our Parks and Recreation Department, who is probably one of our most public, forward-facing organizations in the city. And it really bothers me. And I, and I'm not taking anything away from our city staff who's, who's done things and met, but for some reason, there is just this continued strife. And, and just so you know, it was mentioned earlier about SOS and I, I don't think it was intentional, but, or a group, a Samoan group. And I, I just want to be clear that SOS, Save Our Streets, came about at a very difficult time in our city. And they are, represent many groups, our Asian, Pacific Islanders, African Americans, Hispanic, Caucasian, are all members of SOS. And I've been to many of their, their, their things. So, it's not just this one group or population mix that's having problems. I'll be honest with you, it came up tonight about the, the interviews and completing those from the previous thing. I kind of thought that was done, but obviously, it's an old wound. And to our city manager, somehow, we have to figure out how to close this old wound because it's just not going away. And old wounds tend to fester and get worse and worse. So, I would encourage you to do what you can to, to see if we can't heal this wound. I think, I really do think that there's more to be done. I don't, I don't believe, after watching the, the Parks and Rec Commission, and I know everybody's anxious to get this done, but somehow, some way, we have to get the right people together in the room to decide to finish this classification guide up. And if we don't, we're going to keep revisiting and revisiting and, and we're going to keep hearing about the lack of trust, all the things that, that, that I hear on a regular basis and spend a lot of time. So, I'm going to do something that probably will make a lot of people mad at me, but I just don't think we're ready yet. I think we need to get the right people in the room to talk. So, I'm going to make a motion that we postpone this item to December 3rd meeting to allow staff one more time to try and get the right people in the room. And I, I would just say this, and I learned this in my leadership journey, just because we're the bosses, doesn't mean we're the smartest people in the room. Doesn't mean we're always the right one to try to get something done. And, and so, that's my motion. I don't know if it's going to get seconded. I hope it does. And I hope we can, we can really get the people together to work. And I'm not taking away from anything that's already been done. I appreciate it. I'm not picking on any particular staff member, but we got to try one more time, one more time. That's my motion.
Deputy Mayor Joyce?
I'd like to make a motion to remove the time restraints because I have some questions and I need him to speak. I don't want to eat up all my time too. So, motion to remove the 10-minute timer. I don't think we'll need much more than 10 minutes.
Well, let's just go try to see what, where you go on the 10, on the 10.
Okay. But I'll second that if you have to.
Yes, you do have to. Okay, call for the vote.
Did you want to speak some more?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
I, I got my motion.
Let's just see what, let's see how it goes.
There's a motion on the floor. I did.
All right.
It's just fast.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Thank you.
Motion approved, 3-2. Sanchez, White, Snow.
Okay. So, I appreciate, one, I just really appreciate how many people really care about this because it is very important. And I appreciate everybody taking time to, to dedicate and volunteer and come together over and over and over again. I share also the frustration that has spiraled from a lack of trust between, I think it's not just one side, I think both sides have moments where trust was broken down. I say both, it's like three or four, it's like 10 different sides that all kind of had different breakdowns in trust, which is frustrating from the outside. And I know that there was frustration which compounded into lack of trust, which made communication so much worse as it went on because it was always a questioning of motives, which when you start doing that, it makes it impossible to really come together. So, I'm hoping that we can move forward today in the right direction with a commitment to not just, I don't think we're going to put this to bed, even if we put it back to December or if we pass them tonight. I don't think anything's put to bed. I think we're going to have to continue having this conversation to make it representative of what our community values. So, along those lines, I do have a couple of questions. Do all user groups see allocations when they go out or is it just the user group that receives an allocation?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the first part of the question?
So, and trans, for like transparency's sake, do all user groups see the whole allocation for like a season?
So, our, once we allocate our fields, that information is available on the website and anybody can look up at any one of our parks, who's using the parks and at what time.
Okay. And then, I think there's one thing that's, that's, that I want to add to the mix of things that we should be considering because, yes, we're talking about the user guides, but we're also talking about kind of getting through this, this process that has been frustrating. One thing that I want to, and I, I find myself doing this more and more lately, is the library has a really awesome procedure for complaints. And the library board of trustees, I happen, I was the liaison at one point on their board of trustees and, and it's the commission essentially. So, all the comments that they receive via email or in their comment box, whether they're positive or negative, which there are a lot of both, they come to the library board of trustees so that they can have a full conversation. And as you see the same kind of complaint coming up, they adjust their procedures to make their library better, whether it be adjusting like hours with the computers or something. I really think that's a model that we should take up in the interest of transparency that the Parks and Rec Commission could adopt. Because I think more, the more transparent we can get in this, the, the less we can be suspicious of what's going on behind the scenes. Because we're all doing this together. Everybody is here because they're dedicated to doing this work. And I think everybody is so protective of this process because they care so much about it. So, I would voice support for something like that to increase transparency. I think the longstanding users list is another piece that I agree. If there are longstanding users that are, that are receiving that allocation based on that, then we should just list who they are. I mean, we can define it, but I think that, I don't think you want to continue making longstanding users, unless you do. I was, I was thinking of it as like legacy users almost versus longstanding users. So, I guess that would, either way, it's going to require some kind of definition. And then, this is something that has been brought up over the years, is especially folks that are interacting directly with our very diverse city is some kind of cultural responsiveness training that I think would be just a good thing for us to do. There's no downside to it, in my opinion. If you're already culturally competent, then it's a good refresher. And if you need those reminders, then it's a really good time to have it. So, I would also throw my hat in for that recommendation, just seeing how this is broken down and how some of this, this frustration and broken trust is from, you know, folks that aren't with the city anymore anyway. It's still good to do repair in that way. I do firmly believe that our MEU with Oceanside Unified gives us a really good base in the sense that fields are available. We're building more fields at Park Site One in Oak Cora Zone. We're going to have more fields available in the future. We have gyms like we've never had in the city available. I think that is, I think that is the base that we need to move forward on a step forward tonight. I think that, that makes the most sense to me. The other piece, and I don't know, I would say we don't have to take this into account tonight, but with number five right now, it's schools, other than OUSD schools essentially, that are in, that their physical location is in the city, but that doesn't mean they have to have a minimum threshold of students from the city. So, we could, in theory, have a, again, I haven't, I haven't pulled exact records on this, but theoretically, under these rules, you could have a, a school that's on the borderline with Carlsbad, have all Carlsbad students, but is housed in Oceanside, then would have a higher access to our fields, even though Ocean, is there a question about that one? Even though their students are not, the 70% threshold is or, is an or 70%. So, it doesn't apply to the schools if they are located in Oceanside. So, I think there's some tiering that could go into five. However, I think we have enough fields that it's not an imminent emergency that we have to do it this time. I do think we should have a process for updating this because there are a couple of things that could, I think, get, it's just inconsistent with the rest of the guide. The rest of the guide has a 70% threshold and it has a 51% threshold and above, and then it has all others. And then the schools are just like, well, if you have a building in, in the city, it doesn't matter how many of your kids are Oceanside kids or not. I think, I think it still should matter somewhat, not that we're trying to cut anybody out, but we have made the value of structuring whether or not you have 70 to 100% Oceanside youth and then 50 to 100, to 70%. So, I think it makes sense to do some kind of mirrored tiering within that. And then the last thing I would just say is that I really want to continue to work on our, to work with our commissions to make sure they're able to use their voice. I watched that Parks and Rec Commission and I was, I really hope those that participate with it take from this that after a motion fails and your voice isn't, once your motion fails and it doesn't, and you don't pass something and the item is still in front of you, you can make another motion to do something else to try and gain, you know, consensus. Because we really, we really take in your voice to consideration. It matters what you have to say on it, but the way it came about, we don't have a recommendation at all. So, I would just urge members of all commissions to remember and to, to, if you have questions about that, ask your liaison, ask your staff that are there because we need your voice in these processes.
Mayor Figueroa?
Thank you, Mayor. My first question to Councilmember Robinson's motion, and this is to staff. When, when does Parks and Rec start allocating fields as far as time of the essence? In practicality, you want to have this classification guide done as soon as possible. What date did you say? December, how would that impact staff's ability to allocate fields if it was, let's say hypothetically, December 3rd?
We start, or excuse me, groups can request allocation through November 30th for the period from January 1st to June 30th. So, we start the process of that allocation as we're receiving these, these requests so that we can turn around and provide notice to the groups that want to start using January 1st. So, in all likelihood, if we push this item, we wouldn't be able to use the, the new classification until the, the next season, which would be July 1st through December 30th of 2026.
July, so if this goes to December 3rd, it wouldn't go into effect until the new fiscal year essentially, or the July 1st, correct? Because you will be using what is currently here right now to allocate what? Correct?
We would continue to use the allocation for the, the user class, classification from 2010 until it gets replaced.
Okay. So, just to clarify, the, the impact of not adopting a classification guide to, if this is adopted today, would you use this to allocate fields between now and July 1st?
We would use the classifications. The, the fees would not take effect until July 1st, but, but we would use the classifications.
You would use the new ones?
Correct.
Okay. There's, there's a few things. I appreciate everyone who had input into this. I know that this goes, there's been so much discussion around this. And before I was on council, I was aware of what was going on. And now, as the council liaison to the Parks and Rec Commission, I've been in conversations with commissioners, I've been in conversations with staff, community, user groups. I, what is in front of us seems like the most objective thing that I have seen in regards to the percentages, the categories. I do, I do have a question in regards to the schools because it is an and/or. And so, it's charter schools, private schools, homeschools, not including the joint use agreement with the physical location in Oceanside and/or verified minimum 70% enrollment. And, and then it, it does raise that concern of what, what that can be if a school, a new charter school or another school pops up in Oceanside and it doesn't have a, a minimum, but it's in, within the city lines and let's say they're not from Oceanside. Has there been discussion about creating a minimum there where, whether it is 60%? Since this is kind of falling down the lines of 70, 70, 70. And then when you got to five, it would be within the city limits or at 60%? If, if the goal is to create access for Oceanside residents?
The original intent and conversations around that particular classification were based primarily on physical location. The issue of adding the, the potential residency came from discussions in mediation. But, I mean, my concern would be defining a rate of residency based on existing, existing schools or, or a particular, a particular school, when I think it's important that it be a little bit more objective. school when I think it's important that it be a little bit more objective.
So what would you recommend, you, so this is the most objective standard under your recommendation?
I, I think the most objective would be the, the physical location of, of the school being, being within the boundaries of Oceanside. If, if a school is in Oceanside presumably, it's, it's serving the Oceanside community or the Oceanside community has an opportunity to, to attend.
I, I think that, but then you would have, if it wasn't an Oceanside school, you would still have to verify residency, right? You would, you would verify residency if it wasn't in.
Correct.
So I, I, to me, it just seems like that's the most objective thing to do, to put some type of minimum, even if it's within the school limits, whether it's 50 or 60%, just following this guideline. I, I think that that's something that we should consider just given the fact that something can't, we, we have had schools here, private schools that now have their own fields, but there was a point where I didn't, I don't necessarily know what their student population was, but we, we have had those here in Oceanside. And so just considering the fact that that can be a possibility, something for us to consider, just to continue to have an objective standard where if the goal is to make sure that we're prioritizing, prioritizing access for Oceanside residents, I, that's something that I think that.
So it's an and versus an or?
Correct. But having the and, I don't, I'm not saying that and has to be 70, but having an and maybe at 50. So that's something that I would like to see.
Perhaps, Mr. Gonzalez, you can go look back at what you have and see what the, what that added criteria would look like.
So would the recommendation be 51%, which would be mostly Oceanside?
Yes. At least for me, if, I don't know how everyone else would feel about that.
No, that sounds good.
But it, have it be an and versus and/or?
Which I think the Coastal Academy does, I mean, I think they're at much higher than that anyway.
And, and I'm not thinking.
So he's thinking of other schools, other possibilities. That's what I'm understanding.
Yes, yes. How much time do I got left? Or do we just, it was for, okay. Yeah, I, I think I've been in a lot of conversations prior to me being on council for many years and being involved in the community like I have been with nonprofits and working with the team, working with SOS, working with a lot of the other organizations and, and user groups over the years, that there has been issues within the department prior to the current staff here. But there's been issues within the department and the community that I've been privy to, that I was made aware of, that are, that are really concerning, that I think have created these wounds. And, and their wounds, as Councilmember Robinson said, feel like they still haven't healed. That I, I would encourage our city manager, and I, and I mentioned this before, to, if that is concluding with these interviews, to moving forward with those because it is something that continues to come up. And I think that we can't move forward unless we address some of those things. I, one of the things that Deputy Mayor Joyce mentioned, and it's something that I've been in conversations with the, our city manager and our director about having cultural competency trainings within our Parks and Rec Department specifically and more importantly, not necessarily more importantly, but specifically within our centers that are located in our historically marginalized communities of color, not just having these trainings conducted where it's cultural competency, but also with an understanding of each specific neighborhood, given the fact that each neighborhood has its own culture, its own characteristics, its own history, its own trauma, its own level of activities, or even its level of gang activity within those centers. I think it's important. And I know we discussed having certain people within our community that, that's very capable of leading those trainings. And so those are things that have been discussed. But I think that it's something that we should prioritize going into the new year from move, from discussion to implementation in 2026. I think that that is critical. I, for me, I, I want to move this forward. Like, I, I think that this has been going on for a long time. And I know that there was mention of a classification guide that was brought prior to this that we don't have in front of us. So I, I don't know necessarily what that looks like. All, all I have is what's in front of us at the moment. I think the one thing that sticks out to me the most is the and/or on the schools. And, and I would like to see an and with a, with a verified minimum. I think that's important to me. I think it, for me, it's, I, I want to move, I want to move this forward, but at the same time, I don't want to keep moving forward with these wounds. I don't want to keep moving forward with the challenges that we've had and community groups feeling unheard, community groups feeling that almost being an Oceanside born and raised local, which I am, is not being prioritized. Just that feeling alone. You know, we continue to have these conversations. I, I, but it's like, where, where does this end? And I, and I think that that has been a, a challenge and a struggle balancing community's desire and input and wounds, and also understanding how much staff time has gone into this. And, and to our Parks and Rec Director, you have put a lot of time into this. To our city management team, we've put a, there's been a lot of time put into this. And I fully respect the amount of time that's been put into this by staff to move this forward because at the end of the day, we still have to conduct business. Teams are asking for fields and you have to allocate them. You can't say, hey, we need to wait until this gets approved. I would support having a meeting between now and December 3rd and, and bringing this back to December 3rd if the council feels that's appropriate. I, I would support that motion, but come December 3rd, this has to, we have to have something to move forward on because I, business has to move forward. So I, I would second that motion.
I think it already has been. So Jonathan, Mr. Borrego, did you want to say something?
Yeah, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, I just kind of. Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, so I just wanted to kind of reiterate one point that probably wasn't emphasized as much as we probably should have. But at the end of the day, this is, you know, always has been intended to be a living document. And so as we see deficiencies in this document, once we implement it, we're certainly open and we expect to make changes to the document if it's not achieving its desired effect in terms of equity, in terms of the allocation process. Certainly, the information that was shared with respect to having a minimum threshold for residents on the school, I think actually that's a good, good thing. I think we probably have enough to go with this evening based on the comments that were made to be able to figure that out. But I understand the concern and I think we have enough direction to, and enough precedent in the document in terms of the way that we've classified other groups to be able to move on that. My only request would be if there is a desire to continue this, that there be very clear direction because quite frankly, we went through a lengthy mediation process, which we voluntarily as staff agreed to participate in, in the interest of trying to clear a lot of these areas of disagreement. And I really do feel as a participant in that process, we made a lot of progress. And there was a lot of meeting in the minds through that meeting. After we were done with that mediation process, we, at the request of the community members, also agreed to a series of follow-up meetings to try and get even closer because we did leave mediation with some gaps in terms of what we were recommending. You know, of course, we'll take whatever direction we get from council, but I, I really, you know, I, I don't know what we're going to get out of a continuance to December 3rd, quite frankly, because I think we all have a very clear understanding of what our respective positions are at this point. And what we brought forward tonight is representative of that. So it, you know, it is a challenge. I mean, if it's going to be continued, then I, I don't quite frankly know what the expectation is. We can continue to discuss things. But, you know, it's, you know, I just, I don't want there to be a public perception that we haven't been at the table because we've spent several hours, as was mentioned earlier, dedicated to this process. One thing I do, quite frankly, do have concerns about is if we do continue it to December 3rd and we have additional conversations, there has been criticism that this has been a closed-door process. And I do think that by continuing it to December 3rd and meeting with a select group of individuals, we're opening ourselves up to further criticism, which quite frankly is, is something that I think we need to pay attention to. So if we are going to continue it and there is going to be additional community conversation, then quite frankly, I think it needs to be opened up to the entire community. And I just want to be very frank about that.
Right. Councilmember Figueroa?
Yeah, I, I think for me, that was, that was the big thing. It was just if we can agree to the, the threshold limit of number five, I think that to me is more important than anything else. I, I think that that is the only thing that really stood out to me in regard to this because that was a concern and/or is a big concern of mine. I, I do understand, you know, everything that you, that you shared, City Manager. And I've, and I've talked to the groups and, and I think that that is one of the things that for me, this has been the most objective from what I've seen so far that has come forward. And I know a lot of people help co-create this. So yeah, the, the other thing that I would mention, and I, I really appreciate you saying it being a living document because I know we have discussed that. If it would be possible for this to come as a review for the council every year, and it gives the opportunity for user groups to come. And, you know, this is before you mentioned having a sports council, but it, it's important for us to hear what's working and what's not working, right? And so the fact that it would be a living document where it can be reviewed by council, if it goes to the Parks and Rec Commission as just a review and folks can come in and share, you know.
Maybe a workshop, maybe a workshop kind of a thing.
I, I don't even know if it needs to be a workshop, but I think if we're hearing feedback and then there's ways to improve, because it may be something, I don't know, on number 11, right, that can be adjusted down the line or throughout the years, especially as like Park Site One opens up or who knows what the schools do. But I, I think my main thing is number five. And if staff feels like that can be implemented, I think, and if council can agree on a, on a, on a threshold, that, that is my main thing.
Right. So I do want to say that I have been part of this process for 25 years and trying to get equitable access, trying to get community members to have, to be able to, to have direct communications with the city manager's office, to, for example, in terms of even having like a Samoan cultural to, to get the city to pay for that because there were, you know, there were gaps and, and the Samoan community was working so hard to have to raise that money for something that was benefiting the entire community. So I think it was something that the city manager's office did, I want to say 10 years ago, it's been 10 years, also with respect to Club 55 and getting that funded via the city to be able to afford that access. So I have been actually the person who has been the liaison for many, many years on these kind of issues. And then to even include a liaison at the Parks and Rec Department and setting that all up. I think what has changed was that there were things that happened with staff that are no longer here, but there seems to be a desire to somehow make something happen with respect to folks that are no longer here because folks that are now here had nothing to do with the past. Neither Mr. Borrego or Mr. Gonzalez or, you know, several of the council members. So it is difficult because what we talked about was, okay, this happened in the past, we're now going to move forward. We're going to move forward, we're going to make sure that these kind of things never happen again. You know, what, what things? Well, unfortunately, there was never any kind of documentation and certainly the time has run on any kind of ability to address, right? So all of that, all of that that happened or may have happened in the past, it's done. It's moving forward. And we had this conversation, Councilmember Robinson, you were there, when Mr. Gonzalez first came on, and we all talked our hearts out about what happened in the past with Mr. Godinay, Mr. Wayne Godinay being present, along with other members of the community that felt like they, they had issues. And what we said at the very end is, okay, that's the past. We're leaving it in the past because we need to move forward. And we want to make sure that, again, this doesn't happen. So we're asking you, Mr. Gonzalez, to make sure that that, you know, you set, you set things up so that it, it won't happen again. I have not heard of another issue since, since that meeting, what, two years, over two years ago. We were here a year ago with trying to pass this to be able to move forward on a document that's now, now, you know, since 2010, right? It's the last one. So that's what, 15 years ago? So what I was hoping that we would do today is to move approval and adopt whatever it was. And I, and I was thinking one or two depending on, and it sounds like, and I will say this, the first document that was produced by the Parks and Rec Director was, got the benefit of all those meetings with the different organized boards as well as other folks that are not organized, right? And the schools and everything. But there, there was this desire then to address the issues that were of equal, equitable access. And we, and so the decision was made, let's address this. Let's finally get, and, and I think it was called the hurt feelings, the, the, whatever it was, misunderstanding, whatever, let's address that with all, with, with all honesty and, and transparency, let's do this. So it was continued. This past year, unfortunately, I mean, and, and I think I want to say that the mediation that was suggested, that was accepted, it wasn't like a court order. It, it, this was completely voluntary. And it was to the point where each person that was on there had to sign a, a nondisclosure of, of the comments there, to be completely honest and, and be able to be in a, in a, in a room and feel free to say what you need to say. And hopefully get out of that, things, things that will address them and hopefully move on. What I'm hearing is that because without, you know, giving up any of that confidentiality, there was as much done in those 16 hours of mediation with a mediator, with someone who was acting to try to resolve all these issues. And even after, without the mediator, there was some more movement towards coming to the middle with the hope that one document would be produced to Parks and Rec Commission. I will say that there were a lot of comments that were from folks who were not involved in that process that felt it was not transparent. You know, because of the mere, you know, because of the, of the nature of it, that it had to be confidential. There's a lot that people are feeling like, you know, I'm not, I wasn't a part of that. Why did things change from document one to document two, right? But maybe document two takes into consideration all the necessary things that needed to happen, but maybe it should have been done first, right? Instead of having everything done because after that was all the complete transparency with all the public meetings. with all the public meetings and hearings. It was the only piece that was separate and apart from that. And maybe that should have, you know, in hindsight, that should have taken place first so that everything else after that was completely transparent. I do think that we need to have a document to work off of. And I do think, and I did feel very strongly, that it would be something that would be like a living document, that, because I feel that our city, our department head is very reasonable. When we had, when I felt we had some issues in the East Side, we met with Manny and everything, you know, we were able to resolve the issues. It is when you can't, you don't, you know, you don't want to meet with, you know, Manny, and then that's the problem, that's the first problem. You know, because I said, listen, please give Manny a chance. Please give Manny Gonzalez, our new Parks and Director, a chance. And that didn't happen. And I really, really wish, because I think that's a big part of it too, is it's on both sides. It's not this lack of trust, you know, based on nothing that Manny Gonzalez has done really has hurt us in a very, very big way. For all of us who wanted to give him a chance and to, you know, to have him listen to the concerns that we had in the community, and I'm talking about the Latino community, he listened. And I feel that we have the best Parks and Rec Director in my 25 years. So I think what we need to do all is to agree to give Mr. Gonzalez the full benefit of the fact that he has all of these qualifications and that he has been wanting to work with everyone here at City of Oceanside from day one. I think that it's too bad that we're probably going to move this on to the next, if we move this to December 3rd, but I will suggest, yeah, I will suggest that nothing's going to change between now and December 3rd, but that what we really need to do is have the basis from something that we moved from. And I think that would be the second document. Understanding that there is still concerns from those who are not involved in the process, you know, why wasn't this a more open process? And that's speaking to Mr. Borrego's point. Councilmember Weiss?
Thank you. I have a question for the city manager. How many items are on December 3rd already?
We have several public hearing items scheduled on December 3rd. I can give you the count if you give you a minute, I just received the list here.
Big ones. Because we cleared the second one so that we could have it down.
Yeah, we're just, for everyone's benefit of knowledge, we're looking to schedule the second meeting in December for the downtown workshop since we weren't able to get a consensus from council members to meet outside of a regular council meeting until sometime in January, and we didn't want to push the workshop back that far. So on, right currently speaking on December 3rd, let's see, we have blocks five and 20, we have about three, about three public hearings on, currently scheduled for December the 3rd.
Thank you. I'm not going to support the motion to continue to December 3rd. Us approving updates to the user group classification and the park and rec fee, the master fee schedule is not going to heal or make the wounds that have been referred to up here Whether there's cultural sensitivity training, that's fine, but the issues that have been raised that go back decades aren't going to make a difference in us approving or not what's in front of us today. I would be supportive of approving what's a staff's recommendation with the change that Councilmember Figueroa mentioned, that the, drop the "or" and make it a verified minimum of 51% city. But I will not support the motion for the continuance.
Okay, and I really don't want to, I think we really need to have something. Councilmember Robinson, do you want to say something?
Thank you. So I only picked December 3rd primary to give us some time, but I think there's been enough discussion up here that it really isn't ready to adopt tonight. So, but let me just, procedurally, Mayor, let me ask you something. Is the public hearing closed?
Yes.
Okay. For our next council meeting, Mr. City Manager, I don't know what's on that agenda, I haven't seen it, but could something come back then that we could just look at? It would have the changes.
Yes, so on the next agenda, we do have the park fee update, we have the Oceanside Transit Center 810 mission, we do have a short-term rental update, schedule that date as well, and a couple of other public hearing items, which we may be able to push back if there's a desire to put something. The short answer is our agendas between now and the end of the calendar year are very full. Recognizing if you close a public hearing, then obviously that's something different, but I'm just providing the feedback that was requested.
Yeah, and I get you in your point, because short of being in the room trying to work through the problem and doing it myself, I, you know, I can't coach everybody into how to do it and what to do and to help fix this problem. And I just mentioned to you, and we've talked before, and I truly did think that the need to go back and look at these issues with the previous employees, and the mayor's right, I, you know, the individuals that were faulted are gone, but somehow there's still some questions to be asked. So we'd talked about it before, I don't know if you're willing to take that on outside of coming back, just, I don't know if all the feedback and what Councilmember Figueroa mentioned, if that's enough to move us with some promise that, it's easy to talk about the past is gone, and I wish we would do that more when you talk about East Side, because we always get stuck in the past, Mayor, and then we have to. But as an example, I would say somehow the past is still relevant in this. And I know, you know where I'm going, right?
I don't know. I'm ready to make a motion, that's all I'm saying.
Well, what is it? No, I was going to withdraw mine if the second agreed.
Honorable Mayor, if I could just chime in real quick for the purpose of moving the discussion along, certainly everything that was discussed from Councilmembers Figueroa's suggestion about doing regular updates to the Parks and Rec Commission and reporting out on how things are going and giving the community an opportunity to share their viewpoints, 100% agreeable to that. The cultural sensitivity training, as Councilman Figueroa mentioned, we've already been working on setting that training up, and I think it's a very good idea and would go a long way towards doing this, you know, in terms of improving the relationships with the community. I'm just as, you know, wanting to see that happen as anyone else in this room. So I just want to make sure that I acknowledge that those things, and there could be other things as well that we've discussed, we would be happy to, we would be happy to engage in those and accept those changes wholeheartedly in the interest of moving forward.
Okay, with that, if my second agreed, I'll withdraw my motion.
Can I make a motion now?
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to adopt the second one, the one that's before us with the changes. Councilmember Joyce, Deputy Mayor Joyce.
Okay, so we need to talk about those changes because saying "and" 51%, so you're saying that, I think it was actually brought up at the risk of, I know, the late night, but we talked about access and, you know, I'm going to let it go, but some of those are public schools and some of those are fee-based schools, and I think those also need to be separated out. But we can, if there's no, if there's no temperature to do that today, then I would say, I would recommend a motion to adopt this with the change of requiring 51% enrollment. But we have to establish a second piece here because then there are a whole bunch of schools that don't fall into that category. And so we would need to establish a new six, I would assume, in order to have a place for those groups to be. So I just want to talk through what that looks like because that actually is a real...
What I would suggest, and again, this is probably based on my understanding and the conversations that have been had with the community, if we were to create a second tier of private schools that fell below that 50% threshold, then I would probably suggest placing them as kind of between what's shown currently as seven and eight on this guide here, because really at that point, they should be dropping below our own youth teams at 51 to 70.
I would completely agree with that. I just, there was a thing that was missing there.
I think that makes the most sense to me, and that's what I was going to be suggesting.
So my motion was going to be to adopt that with the described changes by the city manager and to direct staff to complete the cultural responsiveness, a plan to complete the cultural responsiveness training and the transparency around positive and negative comments received by the department, the Parks and Rec Department with, to increase the transparency for the commission and the general public. That would be my recommendation.
I don't understand the last part of it because I think that everything is responded to by the department.
Does that have a question?
Yeah, I don't understand the last part about the, you know, the positive and negative. I think that our staff does respond to all of it.
So I think the staff might respond to it, but I think what's the problem is that when something goes wrong and you're complaining about something in a department to that department, then there is an internalization of that process, and the Parks and Rec Commission is the oversight of the department, just as the Housing Commission is the oversight of the Housing Commission and the Housing...
It's not an oversight.
In my opinion, I think it makes the most sense, given the fact that we've had...
But let's just say structurally, structurally it's not an oversight.
Fair enough. I'll concede that point, but with the issues with transparency, it makes a lot of sense to adopt a program that's similar to the library. I'm not saying we direct them to adopt it today, but that they will start the process of doing something in that manner so that we can increase the transparency.
So it'd be direction to look into something that would be responsive to versus, because commissioners don't have all that time, or, I mean, I think that we've got a good commission, but it's a responsibility of the city, which is basically our city staff.
I'm just describing, from my experience...
And that is also the purview of the city manager.
So on the library trustees, it is extremely valuable, 15 minutes of time, to hear the positive comments about the library and the negative ones, and they come together and plan and make better decisions together. It's a trust-building exercise, and I think it's a really, I think the housing should have it too, but since we're talking about this and trust has been like the word of the night, it's the best thing that I think could build trust because it gives us open space to have that conversation and nothing is cordoned off. So I think it is a really good part of it.
With all due respect, I think that there probably needs more of a coming together, and I think that that, at this point right now, when everybody's far apart, I think that that would probably not be a good thing to do at this time. I do think that it's pretty difficult right now. So the motion, I think the motion, I think we all agree on the document before us with the changes that Councilmember Figueroa has put in, and the recommendation having to do with those that fall outside of the 51% would fit in between, you said seven and eight?
But it's currently shown as seven and eight on the guide.
And also... I apologize. That's going to create a new numerical category, which will require a complete revision of the fee categories that are before you. So if we're going to make revisions that can be easily interlineated tonight and pass the resolution, we can do that. But if we're going to have a vague statement as to we're going to add something here, that's going to have to come back. We don't have enough to rewrite the fee resolution. Now, we could bring back the fee resolution separately, you know, because that's not effective.
Yes, what I would suggest is if we can make it fit within the confines of what we have before today to take that action, if there's a determination that we can't, then I would defer consideration of the fee schedule, but move the balance of it forward is what I would recommend.
All right, so to the extent that it's possible to move on that. And then also the cultural training. I think that was the third thing.
I don't know if, is that even a part of it? I mean, I know we discussed that, I thought, I mean, again, I'll 100% support that. Because we've been talking about that now for what, three months? Just making sure that it's implemented in January, I mean, implemented in 2026 because we've been talking about it. I think my main thing in regards to this, right, because this is what we're discussing is the classification guide. I think, so for our city attorneys, so that means that we would end up having 14 numerical categories, is that what would essentially happen? Is that what you're saying?
Or sub-A or sub-B? I don't know.
Again, the number of numerical categories that you have is subject to your discretion. The issue I have is that the...
It's a public hearing.
Well, one, it's a public hearing, but two, we require a public hearing for adoption of fees. The fee schedule that's before you has multiple pages that are linked to category numbers.
And it would adjust those categories, yeah.
And if you adjust those category numbers now, we're not going to be able to interlineate that or understand that here today. We're going to have to, I mean, we can sit here and go through six pages.
Can we link them to a different, can we link them to a different category?
Absolutely.
And that way they'd have the same fee schedule as like a given category.
Yes, we could do that. So that would work. So if you were to revise the language...
Seven, you said seven is where they're going below?
So you still want to have the "and"...
Yes.
51%.
51%.
And that will not impact that?
No, that's not a problem.
Okay, so what if, and with respect to those that do not meet that threshold, that's the concern that is being, that you have, is that correct, Deputy Mayor?
And private schools, because it's not a public school. So that was the other piece that was, that's been pulled out.
Can I provide a clarification? So there are existing categories without having to adjust. The schools that fall below that 51%, if it's a nonprofit school would fall into category 10 if it's Oceanside residents, if it's a private school would fall into 11, if it doesn't fit neatly into any of the categories would fall into classification 13. So there are definitely options to address schools that would fall below that 51%.
Oh, so all we do need to do then is just say the "and" 51%?
Correct.
Okay, so that's three things. It is adopting...
Private schools being in there.
Adopting staff's recommendation, but with the change of "and" 51%.
That's it.
And the training.
Correct.
And that's it. And everything else...
And what our city manager recommended, well, the review, the annual review.
Yes. All right, so we have a motion, is there a second? Okay, there's a motion and a second. Are we ready to vote?
Can we just, for clarification, can you read it?
Give it to us one more time.
So everyone can understand what's being voted on.
So just to clarify for the council, that the motion that's being voted on right now is to adopt staff's recommendation with the change of "and" 51%. In addition to that, the council will be voting on directing staff to develop cultural sensitivity training for staff, and in addition to that, an annual review of the classification park fees to go before the council or Parks and Rec Commission. Yes, with an understanding that we're creating a new category to capture those schools that don't fit within that 51%.
Well, right now...
Well, not for the purposes of fees, that's separate. I'm talking about on the actual guide.
The classification guide?
No, I think what Mr. Gonzalez said was that it could be captured by other criteria, other definitions.
I'm sorry, I missed, I missed. I'm sorry, I missed that part. I thought he was referring to the fee schedule, so...
But the annual review, that it will be annually reviewed.
Thank you, okay.
And then we can clean it up at that time.
Yes, we're good.
So that's the motion that's on the floor, made by Sanchez, seconded by Weiss.
Yes.
Point of clarification?
By...
So five is all schools that are listed there, right? The motion is that we leave the language alone, it's just charters, privates, it's all the same? Okay, and there's no delay? Do we give preference to schools that have a higher percentage of students in their schools? Like if one school is 90% and one is 51%, are you looking at that when you allocate?
So one of the things that we will adjust is with regard to the department instruction and the issue of the legacy, the legacy piece, the first right of refusal. So that's how we can address the issue of discrepancy.
I'm not sure that that addresses what I was bringing up, but...
All right, let's just go ahead and vote and see where we land, all right? There's a motion and a second.
Motion approved for one. Robinson, no.
Thank you. So that is it for the agenda, except for general council member comments. And I did have like a couple, a few, a couple. I did want to say that I was invited by the mayor of Kisarazu, Japan, which is our sister city, one of our sister cities, to come to a conference and ended up being the keynote speaker at that conference. Now, this is kind of moving back into what we used to have with respect to sister cities and sending delegations. This was not a delegation piece, but I will be doing a presentation at the next council meeting to show the kind of things that we are talking about. We celebrated 35 years as sister cities, plus the actual conference was on being sustainable. And Kisarazu is doing a lot to do that, to make that happen. I also wanted to briefly say, mention that we've been working at Sandag to address SB79. And of course, we're very disappointed that the governor signed on to SB79. But we are currently having discussions as to, you know, how we're going to be spending the funds. There are funds, obviously, that are designated towards certain projects. But we are talking as a region, how to prioritize the projects, the funds that are not already identified per project. And one of the things that we're talking about is doing it by region and then coming together. For example, Oceanside, our highest priority is to finish the HOV lanes. There are, in fact, three projects that were approved at the regional level and also the funding, excuse me, not at the regional level, but also by the whole Sandag board. And yet, because we were last on that, these projects have suffered from not receiving the last part of that funding. I'm talking about the Coastal Rail Trail and also the Inland Rail Trail. Now, because we have been talking, you know, to the other representatives and also at staff level, we are doing better in terms of getting, you know, getting heard and getting a sense that we are going to get these projects funded, as well as having a grant out there that we hope to be able to announce next month. So that is, those are the two things that I wanted to mention. Also, I wanted to also thank staff, because staff is working on a food pantry at Country Club Lane Senior Center, as well as, and thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, because I understand you've been working at, doing a pantry at Joe Baldrum Rec Center as well. So I appreciate that. These are, you know, difficult times with the government shutdown and understanding that while SNAP, the SNAP program, may receive some funding, it's going to take a while. So I know together we will be pulling together as a community and ensuring that we get food out to all the families that need it. Councilmember Robinson?
I'll go very quick, and it has to do with your trip to Japan, Mayor, and I'm glad you went. However, I just learned today that you were actually out of the country. I did get the letter, I saw it, this came out in May. Actually, there's a part on it that says they fully paid for, I guess, your cost or one person, but others could go, and we were never notified. And in the future, no, wait, in the future, I'm not chastising you, I'm just asking, in the future, when things like this, opportunities come up, please make sure through staff or yourself that we're all advised so that if we wanted to go and pay our way, we could. Second thing is with concurrence, I believe, and this even goes back to what happened to the mayor of LA, when our mayor or any of us are out of the country on city business or even out of the state on city business, I believe that it should be notified to all of us so we know if something had happened.
Yeah, I did notify the deputy mayor, I did. And I was only gone two days.
It doesn't matter. You were out of the country. If something happened and we go, and I hear today from the deputy mayor that, yeah, he's the only one that knew, that's not right. So I'm just asking on concurrence with staff, with the council, that we can direct staff to modify. I tried to go through our policies, the closest we have is a council policy 100-60, which talks about reporting. I would just ask concurrence to direct staff, maybe through the city attorney's office, to come up with modification that says, hey, when we're out of the country on city, I don't care about your vacation.
I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to do that. This is the first time that we have done it, and actually, it was addressed to me. It was not meant to be a delegation, so...
You're City of Oceanside, United States of America. Let me read it to you. Don't be, I don't care. Don't BS the people. We all should have been notified. I don't want to argue about it. It's a fact. I'm very nicely asking.
All right. Now, just to be clear, the reason why they mentioned other people is because I was thinking about bringing someone else with me, it wasn't meant for the whole council. However, I will tell you right now that we are being asked to send a delegation to our other sister city in Japan, and that is Fuji City. Now, that is a delegation, that is a request to send a delegation. This one was not a delegation. But thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Joyce?
So do we have concurrence on my request to ask to modify? No? Okay, never mind.
Council, Deputy Mayor?
Just to record, I don't know that I knew I was the only person to know about that. I just happened to know about it. Honestly, honestly, staff should just let us know if there's an official request for anything. And that's just, that should just be what it is for policy. Anyway, we got a lot going on here in Oceanside. As was previously mentioned, there are more than 4,000 families who do not have access to nutrition through SNAP right now. And there are so many amazing schools in our, in our community and organizations and churches that have opened up pantries in their neighborhoods. I want to give a huge, huge shout out to our library. There's a grant-funded program that does lunch at the library, and they bring lots of folks in, get them fed, get them connected with our libraries in a meaningful way. And that person also put together a calendar for each day of the week of where people who are food insecure can find food around our city. And that has been a really awesome resource to be able to hand out to folks or let them know where to find food in this really difficult time. I know there are lots of other folks checking in, and if you need help with getting access to food right now, let us know. Our staff is dedicated to making sure that nobody goes a bit hungry in our city.
Can I go?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for sharing that. I know, and thank you to the library for putting that together. There are a lot of families in our community that are really struggling. They were already struggling with food insecurity, now so even more. Feeding San Diego put a really good tool, and it's very interactive, user-friendly for anyone to use. If you go to feedingsandiego.org backslash find slash food, you can put in your zip code and a mile radius option, and it shows you all of the food distribution sites within that mile radius. It gives you the dates, times, whether it's a walk-up, appointment. It's very user-friendly, and anyone in our community can use, and it's for the entire county of San Diego. Something coming up tomorrow here at the library is the community forums taking place between Tri-City Medical Center and Sharp regarding the potential affiliation of those two entities. And so tomorrow here at the Oceanside Civic Center, they will have a public forum at the library community room Thursday, November 6, between 5:00 and 6:30 p.m. I would really encourage our community to engage with that. Having a quality healthcare center here in Oceanside, in Tri-City, in our community is very important. And lastly, I want to thank the Oceanside Fire Department for putting together the open house earlier this month. It was a great turnout. I went there with my wife and children, along with family members, saw a lot of our community members there, a lot of our nonprofit organizations tabling there. The firefighters were making pancakes and food for everyone. They put on really cool demonstrations. But thank you to the fire department for putting that together for our community. I really enjoyed it as a parent, as an Oceanside resident, as a council member. Saw a lot of our police and fire commissioners there and just members of our community. So thank you for putting that together, because it felt, it seemed like a lot of work. It really did. So I really appreciate it. And that is it for me.
Thank you. So this meeting is adjourned to November 19. Thank you.